Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting, a regular meeting of June 6, 2016. It being seven o'clock, we'll get started. We have quite a busy agenda tonight. 7:00 PM, we're going to have recognition of our retirees. 7:15 PM, visitors. 7:20 PM, approval of minutes. 7:25 PM, teaching and learning highlights. IGO Elementary School's Buddy Up program with Mr. Stanton and some wonderful IGO Elementary students. 7:40 PM, we have the K through 12 art curriculum review with Dr. Berdos and Ms. Arkasha. At 7:55 PM, we have 2016-2017 subcommittee appointments for the budget subcommittee, policy subcommittee, and the school committee representative to the school building committee. 8:05 PM, we have the FPS strategic plan 2014 to 2016, end of the year update on progress with Ms. Spinelli and Dr. Berdos. 8:25 PM, review of the superintendent evaluation process with Mrs. Spinelli. 8:45 PM, the 2016-2017 plumbing bid. 8:50 PM, the FY16 budget update. Then we'll proceed at 9:00 to acceptance of donations. 9:10 PM, other matters. 9:20 PM, the committee will go into executive session for the purpose of negotiating, discussing negotiating strategies with union personnel, Foxborough School Bus Drivers Association. The committee will return to open session. 9:40 PM, we will return to open session and have a vote on the proposed 2016-2019 Foxborough School Bus Drivers Association collective bargaining agreement. All right, well, our first, our first order of business is recognition of retirees. Mrs. Spinelli?
Yes, this is one of our favorite things to do each year, and we have a full house. So it's nice to see not only most of our retirees here, but I'll call it their support systems.
Absolutely.
Spouses and other people are here as well. So if we would like, actually, what do we usually do? We usually call, yeah, I think you usually read their names.
Read their names.
And if you're here, if you would come to stand across the front.
Yeah.
And then we'll say a few words. And then we actually do like to all congratulate you, so we're going to have you when it's time, we'll let you know, and proceed around the outer perimeter so that we can each congratulate you. And this is bittersweet, though.
It always is.
Some of you can still change your mind.
(laughing).
As I always say.
I don't know, those are some big smiles out there in the audience.
A little happy.
We celebrate your service. We do not celebrate your leaving because we want none of you to go.
Absolutely.
All right.
All right, so shall I read?
You may.
Ms. Davida Bloom, from 1996 to 2016, 20 years of service at the Ahern School. Mr. John Hattigan, from 2000 to 2016, years of, 16 years of service at the Taylor School. Mr. Edward Hagerty, from 1975 to 2016, 41 years of service as a music teacher at the Ahern. Mosin Khalifa, from 2006 to 2016, 10 years of service as a bus driver. Valerie Corain, from 1995 to 2015, 20 years of service in the library media assistant at the high school, is that correct? And Allison Anderson Sterling, from 2006 to 2016, 10 years of service in French teacher at the Ahern. Ms. Kathy Swales, from 1994 to 2016, 22 years of service at grade four at the IGO. Ms. Jeanette Wychel, I should say Senora Wychel. Hi, Senora. She had both of my sons. And Ms. Anderson Sterling taught my son Sam for two years, sorry, I digress.[254.45][254.45](laughing). From 2005 to 2016, 11 years as a Spanish teacher at the Ahern. Ms. Patricia Young, from 1988 to 2016, 28 years as in the head of the sped department. And Ms. Joanne Doherty, from 1999 to 2016, 27 years as a speech and language assistant. Thank you all. I added, did you add up, Bevy, the number of years of service?
I, I didn't.
You always do.
But I didn't this year. I'm just (laughing).
Well, I did. I did. I didn't want to steal your thunder.
No, no, she has them already.
So I did, but I didn't want to steal Bevy's thunder.
Oh, that's true. It's usually a role she relishes.
So I totaled it up, and we have 2,000, 2,000, 205 years of service to Foxborough Public Schools amongst all of you. Thank you so much. Yes. If you'd like to come up, give us a standing ovation. Do you want them to, does she say anything?
Should I be in there at the end?
Oh, yes, yes.
Could you do that?
Please.
Thank you.
And before you restart your, we call it the procession, if you'd like to say anything, you are welcome.
Very welcome.
This is a guest table.
The microphone is yours.
It's really bittersweet to see many of you.
It is, yes. It's been a wonderful, wonderful experience here. Truly enjoyed it.
Well, you'll all be very missed.
Yes.
Supportive and wonderful place to work.
And I have to say, thank you, Mrs. Abrams.
Yes.
Amen.
A wonderful, grateful service. And thank you.
Oh, this is a, this is a really terrific group. Had to see them go. But don't be a stranger and come around like all the rest of the retirees.[368.83][368.83](laughing). So congratulations, come on the way around. And at the end, Bevy has a little gift for you from the committee for your service. Oopsie, doopsie, yes. You'd help Bevy, that's great.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I love your job. I hope you're so glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you. I hope you're glad you're here. I don't know, Sam hasn't taught me anyone. I got a card over there. I'm so happy. I'm so proud of you. I love you. I love that episode of 2016. Thank you. Thank you. I hope you're glad you're here. Anyway, I hope to make some progress. I hope you're happy. 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 Anyway, I hope to make some progress. I hope you're happy. 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 I hope you're happy.
You know, while we're wrapping up, Tina, you were saying that your children were taught by them, and as was mine, by a few of them, and Mr. Hagerty in particular, just makes, he just makes middle school kids absolutely love music.
Absolutely.
And he loves everyone, and makes them feel just really special.
Yes. My, my, both of my boys had Mr. Hagerty as instructors and for lessons, and it's part of why they've stuck with the music program for so long, is the love of music. You guys dildens. It is. Absolutely. Lots of good people.
Really lots of good people.
Yeah.
All right, well, as we move on to the next thing.
And we just want to make sure we do recognize a few people who've been here.
Absolutely.
Most impressive as a wonderful bus driver for us, so.
Yes, and that's a tough job, and we're very happy.
He's amazing.
To recognize him.
Yep. All right, boy, we have a full house this week.
Okay.
This is Ballinger, full house.
We do. We're lucky. We have a great full house. Okay.
Good.
We're good.
So now we have visitors.
So, that's right. So, that's fine, okay. So now that we've recognized our wonderful retirees, it's 7:00, 7:10, we'll move on to visitors. Are there any visitors who wish to be heard this evening? Okay.
Would we, would we like to do our special highlights and then do our minutes?
Yes, I was thinking the same thing. I think if there's no objection from the committee, we will move the order of our next two agenda items, we'll flip them, and have our teaching and learning highlights, since everyone is here, come up. That's a teaching and learning highlight, the IGO Elementary School's Buddy Up program with Mr. Stanton and friends.
And Mrs. Burrows. Actually, we'd like to invite Mr. Stanton and maybe Ms. Burrows up. As we know, she recently won an award for the mission on disability.
Yes, congratulations.
In Foxborough for her many years of devoted service to people with disabilities. And I think Ms. Burrows, if she could come.
(laughing).
Yeah, that's good. And if Mr. Stanton and Mrs. Burrows could give you a little bit of the history of how this program was developed, I think you will be as inspired and, and just impressed as I was. This is the first year of the program, so I'll turn it over to the, our two educators who are responsible for the creation of this.
Well, I literally had nothing to do with this other than coming up with an idea with Sue, so I'm going to take no credit. It's really been a program, we call it the Buddy Up program, and for the past three years, we've had a leadership academy program at our school, and we've always done a community service component to the program, but it's always been outside of the school. And an idea that I had was to incorporate the leadership academy into an in-house. At the same time, Sue and I, she had come up with the idea after being inspired by the best buddies program up here at the high school, about something that could be done at IGO Elementary School. So we actually had a shared professional practice goal this year of creating a program that resulted in the Buddy Up program. It's exceeded our expectations.
Very much so.
It's been wonderful, and, you know, there should be so many other people sitting at this table right now, you know, who are a part of it. You're going to have the good fortune of listening and getting to meet six of our students who are representatives, and we also have a video that's going to capture what happens with the Buddy Up program. But basically, we have students that work with their sort of typical peers. And we have three programs at IGO School. We have the adaptive wellness program, the ADAPT PE, which Sue runs. We also started an adaptive art program, which Ms. Schuster is in charge of, and she's here as well this evening, and an adaptive music program led by Ms. Kerner. And it's special time that the students that are part of, whether it's Mrs. Makepeace's special education program, or Mrs. Moynihan's, they have an opportunity to participate and just really get some individualized instruction. The results have been fantastic, and what we found was, though, was to add some of their friends in. And I think what started as a small idea really has spread throughout our school.
It really blossomed, like Mr. Stanton alluded to it, went way beyond, like, people ask us, and my basic comment is, I don't think there's a word to really describe the results that evolved from this. And having the leadership academy as part of the school day allowed a lot more students to be part of leadership versus before school or after school, and they are dispersed out doing various other jobs throughout the school and the day at all the grade levels, which is really nice to see. So there's been some really nice, positive relationships. I think we've seen some children with some difficulty socially, emotionally, really evolve and blossom, feeling very empowered, having this opportunity to work with a student, and really took a lot of pride in what they did. The end product, when I spoke to Mr. Stanton, which was, I wasn't sure if we were going to make it there, but the reward for the students who have worked so hard and the, some of the students who are representing us tonight, was to be able to go to Special Olympics. They dedicated their time, they worked so hard at forming really nice relationships with the students that they worked with, that it was really nice to see the end product come to be. So it was real exciting at Special Olympics to see the Buddy Up students.
So we had 56 students just in our fourth grade leadership academy, as Ms. Burrows says, during the school day this year. But in the past years, we had it before or after school, and we said, let's do it during the school day. And someone else who taught it with us and is an integral member is Ms. Siddle, our counselor as well, and she helps and leads the lessons. We also have a third grade program, so what we'd like to do is to show you a video, and this is just, the Buddy Up is just one part of it, and we had about 16 students who participated. All the other leadership academy students had jobs throughout the school in kindergarten, first and second grade. They did math flashcards with younger students, they read to students, or they were, they listened, they were the audience. Classroom teachers just welcomed them into the room, and it really, in our entire school, had a tremendous, tremendous impact. Literally had teachers crying during the day, just tears of joy, to see, to see the impact of the program. So we'd like to show a short video that captures what the Buddy Up program's all about.
And then we're going to hear directly from.
And then you'll hear directly from our students.
Do you want to walk over there and watch it? Just walk over that way and watch it. Can you see Owen? Can you see?
Can you see?
If you're there.
Sit down, I can see that.
There you go.
Perfect. Is the volume? The volume on that's not on. Here we go.
I work with three kids in adaptive art, Brian, Harley, and Alex, and we do art projects, and sometimes we use clay, glue, paint, and model magic. And I like working with Harley and Brian and Alex because I got to know them more. And Harley, now, he waves to me in the hallway, and Brian.
I work with Alex outside that preschool. He's practicing to say my name, and I'm learning the sign language to play with him. He can only, he can understand some English, but mostly it's sign language. For an example, like, when we first come out, like, you do play, and then I point to, like, the sandbox, because, I don't know how to say sandbox, and, like, it's not really, sandbox isn't really a sign language, you have to do play, then you point down a sandbox.
I do adaptive physical education. I do it with Alex, and, like, at the beginning, we usually, like, run laps, like, six laps, and, um, at the beginning of the year, Alex, he, like, wouldn't even hold the jump rope, and then, um, like, now, he's, like, holding one, like, actually, like, jump rope, and, um, like, we walk down the gym once with the little ones with the jump rope, and we, um, after that, we usually do some stretching. And I work with Brian, and we usually do six laps, and then we do two with the jump rope, and he got very used to me now, and so the end of the year, it's really helped to learn all the sign language, and, um, learning the sign language and helping them. My favorite part was, like, how close, like, at the beginning of the year, like, when my parents, Alex, um, like, like, he, like, he worked, like, walker, like, run a lot, and, um, and maybe on, on here, like, so he would, like, show on, like, example, Alex would, um, like, do it, and then he'd stand, like, running the walk.
I do music, and, um, I do the, I like doing musical chairs with them. It's really fun. Sometimes, like, if they, like, if the music stops, and, like, they can still sit down, we do, like, sign language, just sit down. And then if they don't stand up on the music chairs, I come on, and, um, sometimes in the hallway, I can say hi, and Alex will say hi, and then, like, Harley and Brian will say.
During the music program, we do some musical chairs, some drums, and at the end, we sing songs on the piano. My favorite's the drum, because the kids learn how to do different volumes, how loud it can get, if they're under. And I, Harley, I think, is not used to me, because it always ends, he has to say hi and wait me, so they're all way back. It's exciting, you know, with the drums.
I want to do that.
So what we'd like to do is to invite our students up here.
Please.
Have them talk about their experiences and things.
Take your seats.
Take those.
Bring up some chairs. Everybody pick a chair, and we're just going to introduce them using their first names.
Yes.
All right, so so far, we have, make sure I get it right, we have left to right Derrick, Owen, in the white shirt, we have Callie in the blue, we have Harley, hi Harley, and we have Colleen, and we also have Brian here, he may decide to join us or not. So here are the students in our Buddy program, and as you saw, they were, some of them were highlighted in the video. And what would you like to say?
That's a good job. It's helping you, if you like.
Um, so when we do the Buddy Up program, I think maybe to prepare for the Special Olympics, it helps them, like, know, like, more sign language and how to do stuff, and how to, like, learn a lot more. And I can interact with them now, because when I see them in the hallway before, I couldn't, like, say hi, because I didn't know any sign language, but now I know some sign language, and I can know how to say hi and do sign language.
Well said. That's fantastic. Thank you, Colleen. That's wonderful.
Okay, so I almost cried when I saw that video, because I think it's so nice that children spend time with these kids, and, um, I just think it's really nice that we can do this for them, and I just have a lot of fun with them. Like, I work with three people. Sometimes they don't come, so I share Harley with Colleen. Um, and we fight over who gets Harley. Thanks, we'll take them. So, and then we'll switch off days. Um, so we have a lot of fun with Harley, and then we play with them, me and Derrick and Owen go out with recess with them. It's just a lot of fun.
Hmm.
Your turn.
It's what?
Your turn.
The closest.
You're next.
It's really fun, because I learned a lot of sign language, and now I can, like, help him and interact with him, so it's a lot of fun helping him and all.
Derrick?
I liked it because I was, at first, I didn't know any sign language, I, the only thing I knew to communicate with them was hi. And at first, like, um, I worked with Alex, she, like, he would, he did, he wasn't doing that much, but after a while, when I got to know him, he, he could, like, say my name and, like, um, interact with me.
Hmm. You know what I loved? You spent so much time preparing them for Special Olympics, but when you get there, they're the athletes.
Dusting.
And you guys were the super fans.
Dusting, dusting.
Which was amazing.
Dusting.
What else would you like to tell, what, you have a question?
You all got to go to the Special Olympics and cheer them on?
Yes.
Did you guys really get a police escort?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Well, the long bus did. They were 20 minutes late, I don't know what happened. Me and you got it.
Me and Owen were, like, the only ones, me, Harley, Owen.
Brian.
Brian were the only ones that got it, because they got, they went back before us, and then we went, like, 30 minutes later, and we got police escorts to the high school.
Nice.
That's awesome.
How hard was it?
You know what? You know, Callie, when you said you were going to the most fragile, I did cry a little bit?
And Mrs. Spinelli, I cried too.
I still have water in my eyes.
Yeah, me too. Because Ms. Burrows asked us to, like, think of one word to describe the program, and I've been thinking and thinking about that last few minutes, and I'm just, if I can only pick one word, I'm going to pick inspirational. Do you know what that means?
Yeah.
What do you think that means, inspirational? Anybody can answer this?
Um, can I do it?
Sure.
Okay, so it's something that inspires someone, so I don't know if anyone, if you don't know the word, word inspire, but, um.
Well, I'm inspired, will I be a better person in the future, the next time I ever challenge? How hard was it for you guys to learn sign language?
Um, not really hard, because everything sticks in my brain. Yeah, the helpers, the helpers actually help you, like, if you don't know a word, like, sharing, they can tell you, so then it just sticks in your brain.
Excellent.
Sticks in your brain.
It, it does help with the colors, because, um, what we taught them today, if they're, like, it's blue, you would do the letter B, and then you'd shake it, and that's the color blue. So it's just literally the color, the starting word in sign language, and then you, like, shake it. So that's, the colors are pretty easy, and then, like, play is this, swing is this, so it's, once you know it, it will, like.
Mm-hmm. I think Brian might be still practicing for Special Olympics events right now. Harley? Harley?
Harley.
If you like the Buddy program, give one of your friends a high five.
I want one too. Thank you.
Well, I, I love the word inspirational or inspiring is perfect, and I, my heart is so full, I can hardly speak right now. It's just, it's an amazing program. I think education is about so many things, and certainly it's math and science and English and all the core curriculum subjects that we spend a lot of time speaking about here at this table, but what these children are learning is so much more important than anything else they could be taught, and this is just incredible, is the other word that comes to my mind. I'm, our future is so bright. If these are our student leaders that are coming up, we are so lucky. We are so lucky. Mr. Stanton, it was wonderful when you brought your Student Leadership Academy last year to meet us, and these kids are truly inspiring. Thank you.
So proud.
And Ms. Burrows and everyone who's facilitating this program.
And I think one of the things I, it just sort of shows that if given an opportunity, what children are capable of.
Absolutely.
And the other part, too, the staff members, they talked about how they taught them sign language.
Yeah.
Dr. Einsel's here, she's been tremendously, so the support that we've had for the program, and, you know, they're all heading up to Ahern next year, so Ms. Abrams is really excited.
Ms. Abrams is behind you.
She's here as well.
And you know, that's what, I was, that exactly, my latest thought, because when you go to the Ahern, there are, all of these six students are going into fifth grade. When you, when you get to the Ahern, it's, you know, we all know it's a bigger school, the more friends you have, and the more people you recognize in the hallways you interact with that you already know, the better for all of us, right, kids? So now you'll even know more than you would have, and it is amazing.
Yeah, and they have the power of about 60, so over 60 students that have been involved with this.
That's fabulous.
So we're really excited.
I'm excited.
Thank you very much for letting us join you today.
Thank you for coming and cheering this with us. Absolutely.
Before you, before you leave, I believe you're in due for congratulations too.
Yes.
When we find you in the newspaper.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
We're very proud of you.
I'm very humbled and honored, believe me. Mr. Stanton does how to make.
I'm very humbled and honored, believe me, Mr. Stanton does have to make me speechless, so we're kind of.
So students in the Buddy Up program, you can stay for the rest of the meeting if you would like to, but it's probably not that interesting to you. So you actually can go home if you would like, alright?
They're gonna be a hard terrorist tomorrow, so they have to get their feet.
Oh then.
Wow, fun, enjoy.
Derrick, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Harley?
Ms. Finelli?
Yes.
Can we say something to you as a parent?
We would love to hear what you have to say. Do you want to come up to the microphone, Stephanie?
We would love to hear.
I'm sure, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say I could probably speak for all the parents of the special needs children. Best part of Special Olympics was all the chairing and Mr. Stanton and Ms. Barrows do such an incredible job. And it was, we were, you know, we were all sitting there and we were crying when the kids were high fiving and they had signs and then extending it for them to go to the rally at the high school with the older kids. Just wanna say thank you, it was, it's an incredible program and I'm glad Harley got to be a part of it. We're looking forward to, forward to next year and the big move to the Hearn, it's, it's nice to, as a parent, it's nice to see your child, when your child doesn't necessarily have all the skills to, to make friends and it's, you know, it's hard for them, Harley has to be nonverbal, not all the kids are nonverbal, so some of the kids don't, you know, he can't go up and just speak to them and the kids are, kids are wonderful. As a parent, it's heartwarming and that video was fantastic, so anyhow, thank you very much.
It is heartwarming, thank you.
Welcome.
Another good job as usual, Harley.
Tell everybody thank you. Yeah, you're losing the mayor. This guy is the mayor of the IGO.
He is, yes he is.
Watch out, um, soon.
Well, there's room for a mayor at a Hearn, so that's good. Good job. And look, the buddies stay to go and have a little social event, awesome job.
Thank you girls, thank you. Oh my goodness, wow, wow.
Just adjourned.
I'm really, that was amazing. So Bruce, we flip flopped our approval of minutes with the teaching and learning highlights, so we're gonna back up and do approval of minutes now. So we had such a packed house and some very eager students to share. So our first minutes are the May 16, 2016, regular meeting minutes, does anybody have any changes or amendments to the minutes? I did not. I did not. I wouldn't.
Motion to approve.
All second. All in favor? Any opposed, 5-0? Thank you. Alright, our second minutes are the May 16, 2016 Executive Session Meeting Minutes. Does anyone have any changes?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting executive session?
I'm gonna abstain since I wasn't there.
Okay, so 4-0-1. Could we have a motion to release these minutes?
I'll make a motion to release the minutes.
All in favor? Four, you gonna stand again Bruce? Okay, 4-0-1. We're all set with that, we're actually approved to release. Alright, moving on. We are ahead of schedule by five minutes.
Nice job.
I like that. To the K-12 Art Curriculum Review with Dr. Berdose and Ms. Arkasha and team.
Come on up.
This is really exciting.
Very.
So as you know, our curriculum review cycle, we have Fine Arts this year as well as Business Technology Education. So this evening, we're going to be celebrating really the work of this fabulous team. We have one person that's not able to be here, but I'm excited that four of them are. It has been a tremendous amount of thought and reflection and work that they have put into this review this year. So what we do is we study where our curriculum is in alignment to standards that are there. The art standards for Massachusetts are still 1999, so we look to the national standards, we look to what we're doing, where our strengths are, where our areas of improvement are, and then our recommendations when it comes to curriculum instruction, any resources and professional development. And they've done a fantastic job of really just being so thorough, but there's so much to celebrate. When you look at the strengths of what they have accomplished with their students, it is amazing. And you're going to see a lot of that within the PowerPoint that they have here as well as the video. And then another piece that I think is really exciting is getting updates on some of the students that have graduated. And particularly of interest here is really surveying our alumni, I know I've been able to see firsthand students come in and give feedback to our students that are now out and doing this in the, in the real world if you will, outside our walls. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kelly and let Kelly and her team.
Thank you, thank you for having us and having us follow such an amazing act, I mean, I don't even know how we're gonna like even come close to that. But I truly am like honored and humbled that you let us come in front of you and just talk about our department and all the amazing things that, that the team has been doing and also share some of our goals moving forward, so thank you, thank you for this experience. I want to introduce my team, this obviously couldn't have been possible without them, all the hours they put into it, gathering data, going through the curriculum, gathering lessons, talking to our students, so they really are the, the bread and butter of what you're about to see. So we have Clara Schuster, Clara teaches at the IGO, the Taylor and Foxborough High School, so. Linda Lorman who teaches at the IGO in the Borough. Sean Trice who teaches at the high school, she also teaches our new AP courses that started last year. And we also have Kristin Girardi who's not with us today, but she teaches at the Hearn Middle School. So looking at our last curriculum review, which was in 2010, there's been a lot of changes to our department and the department's been evolving. First off being, if you look at the team sitting around our table, we have four new teachers and four teachers who have retired since the last time we had a curriculum review. So knowing that, when we went to do a vision statement, we kinda had to say, you know what, we really need to draft a new vision statement because we have so many new voices at the table. So what we did as a team is we looked at three questions, we asked ourselves, what do we believe the purpose of our department is? What opportunities do we provide for our students? And what things do we value most moving forward in the department? And that's how we came to this vision statement. When we were looking through the curriculum, the whole time we're looking through this and again, having such a great team where we have each of the three levels represented, elementary, middle school and high school, we're looking at the whole child. So what opportunities are we providing our students in art K through 12, not just at single levels? And it's amazing that we get to gather together at professional development, gather together at meetings and talk to each other and talk about this vertical alignment of curriculum and of instruction. And it's our belief that we're not just teaching a elite group of skilled artists, but we're teaching every child, so teaching every child to communicate through the arts and experience the world through the arts. So after we did our vision statement, we came up with four goals that we wanted to focus on together, going back to our vision statement and saying, well, are we really doing this for our students? The first is to identify and research new ways to nurture a cultural appreciation for the arts. Again, thinking of every single student, not just students who are gonna be applying to art school. To analyze how we currently support the development of visual literacy skills. To identify best practices for encouraging personal voice, especially where students are going into the AP level and that's what they're asked to do. And then lastly, to evaluate ways to support the growth of creative problem solving skills in K through 12. After we came up with the shared goals, we then broke down to individual levels, so we had the team talk to their colleagues at each of the levels and come up with three to four goals for that level, knowing that an elementary school art teacher is gonna have very different goals for their students than a high school art teacher. So for an example, elementary school teachers, right now they're looking a lot at the different fine motor skills needs of students, especially now in the age of technology. And then whereas in high school, we're looking at things like how to get a student to develop a body of work with 12 pieces talking about one concept. So there's completely different things that we're looking at there. So the process we went through, first again, developing our vision statement and our goals, just to have an overview of how we want to look at this process. Then we looked at our curriculum and checked its alignment with the Massachusetts Visual Arts Standards, so the Massachusetts Visual Arts Curriculum Frameworks. And as Dr. Berdose had mentioned earlier, the state standards were last done in 1999 and that's what they want the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to use, all public schools, their art departments are looking at those standards. The national standards, those were just redone, so there's a new next generation of standards. Those had previously been done in 1994, they were just redone in 2014. Massachusetts has not adopted those standards yet, but what they have do, have done is they've drafted a crosswalks, which we were able to get the document for, to see where our standards align with the national standards, so that's what we were focusing in on. Then we looked at assessments we're using, K through 12, both the formative and assumative, to see where those aligned and DDMs play a big part in that. Then analyzed best practices in art education, so what are the, some of the terms that you hear used a lot now, things like STEAM and Studio Habits of Mind, so we looked at those practices. Then we conducted both student and alumni interview, surveys, again, you know, we're fortunate enough to be connected to a lot of our alumni, so we're able to reach out to them and see, well, what we're teaching you is that being able to be applied in college, so we reached out to them too. And lastly, we identified our positive findings and needs.
That's horrendous amount of work right there.
I have a good team, I have a good team. Alright, so curriculum, we are proud to say that our sequential program is aligned with the Massachusetts Visual Arts Standards across all grade levels, so you're talking K through 12. In your full document, you actually have a page in there that shows how we checked that out. So we graphed out what are the core course objectives for each of the levels, K through four, five through eight and then nine through 12, and then we went through it and put lessons that we were doing or things we're doing in class that met up with each of those core course objectives, to make sure that that met up.
Can I stop you right there for a minute rather than save everything to the end? I don't think, let's say the average person or even other educators really know that the standards in art, even in elementary, are really sophisticated.
Oh absolutely.
Some of the standards, just Critical Response, Concepts of Style, Stylistic Influence and Stylistic Change, I don't think people realize how sophisticated the Visual Arts Standards are. And so that really jumped out at me in that, that just to be able to add that a little bit so people understand as they're going through, that these are really serious instructional standards that you deliver.
Absolutely, there are.
Kids can, yeah.
Yeah, 10 indicators that for each, each of the grade levels, so absolutely, yes.
I will jump in and just say, it's, it's an excellent point, but I think as a parent who's attended the elementary school and middle school and art shows, when you go and see the students' work and realize what they've been studying, it is apparent that they're, the standards are high and, and very comprehensive about what the kids, I'm always impressed whenever I go to an art show and see the body of work that our youngest students are doing, it's really great.
And it's exciting when you're at the art shows too, to hear them talking about their work to their parents and explaining who Matisse is and who Van Gogh is and that's awesome. So then we started looking at all three levels, how we're incorporating the DDMs and making sure that those are aligned with the core course objectives, so how are we sure that we're meeting those? At all three levels, we were happy to see that we're incorporating interdisciplinary lessons, so ELAs used a lot in the elementary school, again, if you go to the art shows, you see a lot of writing that accompanies the work or even the books that they do in the elementary schools. There's a lot of math relations, science relations, history and then global citizenship, which is one of our district initiatives moving forward. At all three levels, they provide lessons that foster 21st century learning skills, again, another district initiative. And then at all three levels, they show vertical alignment and the progression of both fine arts and digital media skills. And we understand that we're very lucky in this district to have that opportunity where we have fine art studios for drawing and painting. And then also from grade five through 12, you have the opportunity to study graphic design as well, so that's huge. So you notice in these slides, again, talking about the, the whole experience, you'll often see the one on the left is either a elementary school or middle school, and then you see that skill evolved to high school. So this one you have an Hearn artist who's learning how to draw from direct observation and then what those tools lead to once that student gets to high school. So trying to take away that mystery that art just happens to those who, who have skills.
That was a while for me. Or an aha, I should say.
Whoops, sorry. Another thing that's, that's big in our department, K through 12, which is pretty awesome, is that you see that students, there's a progressive journey of how they get to their art, again, it's not just this art just happens for those who see it or their imagination, but there's a process, there's a way that their thinking evolves. So in the elementary school, you'll see like drafts or they have sketchbooks in the Taylor and the IGO and the Borough. And then at the high school, they all have sketchbooks too, so there's these kind of drafts that lead up to a final version of ideas.
I like that quote from, that's a sixth grade student saying, "I like the entire process because it shows how you got there, just like a road trip." I think that's an excellent observation from a 12-year-old, I think that's great.
And that was enlightening for us to, you know, you can be a teacher trying to teach that stuff, but are they really hearing that? So to hear it back in the surveys was awesome.
I bet.
So moving forward, looking at things that we need, Mr. Stanton talked about the Adaptive Art Course, so we want to write a curriculum for that new Adaptive Art Course that just came out a couple of years ago that Ms. Schuster has, has campaigned. Then updating curriculum for grades one, two, three, adding more ELA lessons, so where else can we add ELA lessons in integration with the elementary school? Reviewing and revising the middle school art curriculum, we have two new teachers at the middle school, so relooking at the lessons that were taught before and then looking to add new voices to those curriculums. And then as far as the high school curriculums go, Digital Photography, which was once computer imaging, so changing that over, Graphic Design 2 and Senior Inc. Senior Inc. has become more community oriented, adding in clients, so really playing with that in the curriculum portfolio. And then of course, the three new AP courses that have been added in the last two years. And then we also would like to discuss at some point adding a possible AP Art History, which would take in a whole new demographic of students at FHS who don't take art classes.
I'm over your mouth thing, I would love that.
Well, at the, the senior awards night, I kept hearing some of the students called up for awards saying that they were gonna minor in art history and I was like, oh, we need that art history class, need that art history class. Positive findings as far as instruction goes, so the nitty gritty within the curriculum, again, the lessons are aligned with the Mass Visual Arts Standards, there's a dedication to teaching critical thinking and visual literacy skills, so not just here's a step, follow me through the process. There is, the curriculum's designed to foster independence, observation, invention, risk-taking and exploration. Students are encouraged to experiment, persevere and arrive at their own solutions, again, not a, I'm gonna draw something on the board and you have to follow me. We have highly qualified artists who are teachers, which is wonderful because students get to see their process as well. The inclusive art classes offer differentiated instruction, we have a lot of inclusive classes, not just the Adaptive Art Class at the elementary school, but we have a lot of inclusive classes at the high school too. The new addition of the AP classes, the K through 12 Global Awareness through lessons that incorporate art history. And then technology is incorporated in K through 12 lessons, not just in graphic design, but also using the Elmo, they use it in pottery where students can watch the teacher building a pottery piece and projectors. And the new thing that we're doing this year with the senior project is video tutorials, where we have students in graphic design who are in the advanced levels who shot video tutorials of how they do a process so that students can go back into the archive of videos and try to figure out how to do a step if they get lost.
Wow.
So again, one of the things that we always are challenged with as an art teacher is not just teaching a student how to do something, but teaching them to kind of discover that on their own, so that they are kind of in charge of their own growth and their own development as an artist.
That's actually one thing I've noticed when I do stop in that is totally different from, say, what we might have been familiar with, is they really do believe that. That they're not just doing a project assigned for art, that they really do realize that they have their own individual process that's within them. And that is, that is apparent to me as a non-artist visiting you, that that, that really pervades everything. Which is amazing to me.
And these are some of our younger students, so they were asked by Ms. Lorman and Ms. Schuster, what do you think the main purpose is about learning art? And again, us, we're trying to see, make sure that they're not just saying to be really good artists, but are they really getting what we're trying to teach them? I like the first one, learning how to relax your mind. And the last one, learning how to help others, that's another thing you see walking into any art room, it's not rows of desks. It's not rows of desks. It's not students, even in the in the graphic design room, students are constantly collaborating. We really, you know, push collaborative classrooms. And another, you know, wonderful thing being in the district and having so much support is the different media and materials we get to offer students. So giving them more choice in their projects, how they approach projects, especially at the AP level when students are taking all these techniques, all these skills, everything they've learned, and then using it as a lens to to say, you know, how do I want to show social injustice with animals using any material I want? You know, that's that's a pretty big statement to take on in art. We also didn't want to leave out some of the things that have happened outside of the classroom. These are things that, some of the things we're most proud of. We got together as a department a couple of years ago and decided we wanted to have a motto. So our motto was, "Where art lives out loud." So we're trying to live by that, where art lives out loud in Foxborough Public Schools. So these are things that we have that are beyond the classroom. So things like the art clubs, opportunities for students for portfolio development. Students who are going to school for art school, it's such a different process than applying to a college for for just a BFA and not be in the arts. You need a portfolio. And we have teachers who have gone through that experience and are there to help students develop their portfolio. And not just that, Ms. Trice and Ms. Pollicino and even Ms. Pillsbury, every year, we take the students on a trip to National Portfolio Day where all the colleges are there to represent it that can critique their portfolios. So that's a big thing that the students know that they're supported. And they come back and tell us that they felt supported in that whole application process. So National Portfolio Day trips, the Artist Studio and Gallery Student Exhibit. The Foxborough Art Association has been awesome, giving students that real world experience to have their artwork hung up next to Foxborough Art Association members. It's incredible. Senior project at FHS, we've had students who've gone to graphic design studios, students who have worked in museums, students who have worked at the other schools as assistant art teachers. So having, again, that real world experience. And then, as Dr. Barris had mentioned earlier, also having alumni come in from art schools and to do critiques with our students. So like this year, Ms. Trice had some of our mass art students who then brought some of their friends from mass art to critique some of our AP work.
Wow.
And show theirs too.
And show theirs.
Wow.
So moving forward for instruction instructional needs, just coming together, more common planning time, more looking for more adaptive resources and tools for inclusive art courses in the adaptive art room. I liked what we were hearing from the Igo. We're thinking about trying to come up with a peer buddy system for adaptive art classes at the high school level. So if a student's taking graphic design, they have a peer buddy with them, helping them with that graphic design. Because we found that that's a it's a higher threshold to cross sometimes with graphic design with students. Reviewing opportunities to minimize scheduled disruptions and time out of class K through eight. Reviewing instructional time K through four. Developing after-school studios for portfolio development. That's one thing we heard in the surveys is kids want extra workshops after school for specific tools. And then also, we really need to update our department website. So working on updating the website. Assessment, assessment, again, some some things that we do in assessment. We do a lot of assessments in art. It's funny, you know, people think that we just look at art and we say, oh, that looks great or that's not so good. But there are a lot of different assessments we use. So it's the first thing I tell the kids. I don't just have like this magic trick that I do and check your work out. So we do use rubrics, K through 12. We do self-assessments and peer assessments, which are huge in art. So again, that writing across curriculum and also having students be self-reflective about their work and learning about their work. Artist statements and statements of purpose, even in middle school. Mr. Ardi is starting them writing artist statements. And then in AP level, they have to write a statement of purpose or an artist statement that goes along with their 24 pieces that they turn in. Conceptual development through journals and sketchbooks, class discussions and critiques, one-on-one meetings, portfolios, portfolio reviews with teachers, sentence summaries, K through four, project checklist. So project checklist would be something easier for K through four than obviously a rubric. Student exhibition of work. And then the surveys that we got back. And on the right, you can actually see the AP students getting their critique from the mass art students. Moving forward for assessments needs, again, just common planning time or common planning time, looking at student work. We're working on a data management system right now with the tech department for our DDMs, which would be awesome because we don't have MCAS scores or anything to look at, that kind of breadth of assessment. So, you know, talking to tech and and hearing that we might be able to follow a student from K through 12 and see their work is is just like mind-blowing and exciting. And then aligning of vertical assessment vocabulary, K through 12, and reviewing ways to vertically align report card grading systems, K through eight. Resources, again, we realize that we're so lucky with the amount of resources and support we have in Foxborough Public Schools. I love the parents that come in during parent-teacher conferences in the high school and they come into the graphic design room and they're like, I wish I took this class. So it's it's awesome.
Wish to have any art class there. I imagine you'd be in Claro Linda's stuff.
I'd be right there with you.
Okay, thanks.
So we have 2.5 art rooms at the elementary level, three art rooms at the middle school level, one of those being Graphic Design Lab, and three art rooms at the high school, one for your sculpture and pottery, one for drawing and painting, and one for graphic design. One of the things that we're facing now, and again, so happy to be in Foxborough Public Schools where we can, we can kind of take this on, is that we have this new group of new generation of students who are coming in who are so technically savvy. And they're constantly being bombarded with visual information from advertisements and from iPads and their phones. So how do we help them through that to decipher images and decipher symbols? So using those graphic design tools. And they're all using studio industry, industry standard studio software. So Photoshop and Illustrator. So we have a video that was shot by Cooper Vashron. This was done about four years ago. Cooper was already in Emerson and we had asked him to come back and shoot a video for us. Just having the students talk about what it's like to be in the art program. And I thought it would be really good to add to this just so you can hear in their words. And and so we could say that it's not just us, but it's actually coming through. It's, yeah.
It's showing over there.
It's showing here, but on the screen.
Don't worry, Dr. Barrios is on her way over there.
You need me, Bertos, to the rescue. Let's hope. Way better than me tripping over there.
I know, I can.
This is really, art is a process. You know, while actually, instead of sitting in silence, let's just maybe take some questions over to, is it going?
Does it happen? It's okay.
Why don't we either ask questions or make comments so then we can sum it up with the.
Sounds like a great idea. Chris, would you like to?
Can you explain your DDM process? Is it a writing goals or is it not work that you're including?
Do you want to talk about your DDMs at the elementary level?
Sure, that's fine.
Linda and I came together and we basically decided what are the skills that we're focusing on? And we have units designed around that. So for second, we have one for second grade and one for fourth grade. Do you want to talk about?
Second grade deals with space in a work of art so that the student understands all of the components. So they understand what's, how did, what far and near is in a picture and what they should do to make it look like that or how to make it overlap. And so when they, when I walk up to them and say, how did you use the space in your work of art? They're able to tell me, I did this and I used that. And you can see I made something look far away. And this is how I filled the space or this is how I use the negative for positive space. So in other words, the DDMs, when I talk to them, that's how I determine whether they're meeting the discipline plus being able to see that they've done it.
So you you're measuring for your own purposes, the concept, the growth in the concepts and skills that you have been focusing on.
Yes, and and so those are part of our state standards, but also the element of space is one of the elements of design, which ties into, you know, one of the, you know, set of skills that the students are learning from K all the way up through 12. In the high school, it's, you know, even common for professional artists to talk about the different elements of design, such as, you know, in, you know, a little more involved in terms of space. But just kind of, we are building those skills from the elementary level all the way up. And it is important for us as teachers to understand what these students, what, you know, what they're learning so that then as we progress through the higher grades that we can continue to build upon those skills.
And it's like, it's really, if we try to equate it to another subject area, we understand. It's like any other content area that if if you notice through your own measures that students are not growing or acquiring concepts you hope, whether it's base or proportion or whatever it is, that you know to spend more time on it instructionally so that they move on to the next level with a stronger, more solid understanding and ability to apply it. So it's like, it's really like anything else. If you think about, if you equate it to ELA or math, that's really what you're doing.
Well, it's a tool for us as teachers to to evaluate how we're teaching and where we need to change and, you know, how we need to look at it.
And it is nice to see the progression because we do a pre-test and then we teach another lesson. And then at the end, we do final assessment. It is really nice just for us to be able to look at a specific skill and see the students grow throughout just the school year. It's been really positive for me to see that with my students. It's helpful.
It is, yeah, like me.
Yeah, so the elementary school level, they have a pre-test and a post-test and a project that relates to both. And then at the middle school and up through high school, it's more portfolio of work and using a rubric to show us high, medium and low growth.
And we pull in Portfolio Day into that too and how they really got ready for Portfolio Day, how their portfolio really sits and and how people at Portfolio Day, the administrators there, really react to it.
Nice, great, nice.
Is the video up? Wonderful. And then we'll go back to questions.
I always loved art when I had it in elementary school and middle school. And then I came into high school because I really wanted to do art, not necessarily a career, but it was always a hobby that I'd always enjoyed. When I was younger, I didn't know it was a real thing to do. I thought I'm just an artist. It just grew as I went to middle school. And when I came to high school, it got a lot more serious. And I realized this is what I love doing. I feel like everybody's ideas all kind of come together when we have a collaborative class. I feel like having different grades in the same classroom is a great thing to have. When you come in as a freshman, you don't know any of the other grades or ones. And so you get to meet people that you don't meet outside of school. When there's seniors in the class, there's a lot more derived. You have the kids that are older and more experienced. But you also have new kids coming in with new ideas and new people. I think that you can get a lot more out of an art class than you can in a regular classroom. You can sit all day taking notes in math class. But when you come to art, you learn, like, doing the process. Most kids in these classes we're in now, this is what they want to do for the rest of their life. So we're all kind of going towards the same place. I am hoping to be able to expand skills that I'm just starting to learn now and also help other people find their way through the art program as well. If they didn't encourage me, I probably would not still want to do sculpture or pottery or anything else like that. I would still be drawing, painting. This school has such a great program and I feel like everyone should be open to it. In the end, you're all artists. You have different ideas to create. And I realize that this year, the art hallway is my home. It's where I feel comfortable, where I can, like, just open up.
Cooper just graduated this year from Emerson.
Now, Kira Halbert, what, is she like a junior in college?
Uh, Kira is going to be, yeah, she's a junior. She's going to be a senior. She's actually, she was at our Foxborough Street Painting Festival this year and last year and took like the full award for People's Choice, like top award both times.
Both years?
Both years.
Wow. I couldn't believe it, but I remember her. It was like Wildlife or something last year. I remember, yeah. I put a lot of tickets in that pocket.
And then Amber Daughney was in that video. Amber's at RISD right now. Lindsay Coniff was in that video. Lindsay now goes to UMass Amherst for marketing. She's actually an intern at Patriot Place for Marketing this summer. And if you see the Foxborough Cares logo, that's Lindsay's, so.
We really do know our alumni. We weren't kidding about that. Chris, did you have a follow-up question that you wanted to ask? I didn't know if we cut you off when the video started. Were you all set?
No, that's good. You guys can go and I'll get back to it.
Does anybody else have any questions? Comments? I know I am, I was going to say the same thing. I'm always impressed when we have a curriculum review come before the committee, how how very deep you drill down and and how exhaustive the process is and how, yeah, just really how how.
Really compliments.
What's the right word I'm looking for?
I told you this morning, I told you when I got here. I told Amy this morning, I told you when I got here, I thought it was thorough, it was interesting.
Thorough, that's the word I was looking for.
And it was so professional, your whole report. I think, so I think if people who have interest in it or just want to know what it's like, can, you can ask for the full report. Because the written report, the PowerPoint was amazing, but the written report is really interesting and so thorough. And I, I will say, having been around when you had your last review and through the changes of the four staff members retiring and the four new ones coming in, I would say, I think that the K-12 art department has always been on the same page. Don't you think? I mean, that's, of all departments, like, they're always on the same page. And that's why their vertical alignment, I think, has always been strong, because they're so good at building one another's work. But what is so amazing to me and so wonderful, the community projects didn't exist. I mean, you've just taken it to a whole other level, the community involvement, the projects. That, that in the past few years has just exploded and, and I real, and your Twitter, I really enjoy your Twitter account.
I like the tweet with that.
Adaptive art didn't exist a few years ago, and that's become one of the most powerful things that we do for our students with disabilities. So I, I think the, the areas of growth they've had have been astounding, in addition to continuing to build on what they already did so well as, as art professionals. So I, I was just blown away by your report. My thought was amazing.
The latest tweet from Foxborough Art, and then I'll get to it, was the graduation hats that were painted by our artists, which were all magnificent. That's all I wanted to point out.
I would just say, if you're interested in art, Foxborough School seems like a good place to be.
And, and when we hear our alumni coming back and telling us that, telling us that they feel like they were above their peers, that's like, okay, we're doing, we're doing what we need to be doing.
They really do, to, to a person, basically, though.
I mean, you have a student that goes to RISD and can teach graphic design the second year and get a paid position for it, that speaks volumes for you to do that.
Chris?
Uh, the data management program that you want to bring in for the DDMs, would that be like an online program? Were they able to view the artwork from second grade all the way through high school?
Uh, yes, right, right now we're working at it, that we can actually put in the rubric scores and the DDM scores. We haven't found a way yet to try to hold that much artwork, because that's gonna be a lot of data to hold into that system. But that's what we're looking at, yes.
Great. Would you like to finish your, the moving forward?
So, moving forward, our curriculum needs, just some technology at the, at the middle school, projectors, Almo, update, storage cabinets, designated room for the burrow. And so we look at the kiln placements in the elementary schools. Middle school, again, storage, we need to replace some of the tables in the computer lab. The high school, we have a growing digital photography class, so looking at getting more digital cameras for that class. Rethinking, we had lost a darkroom during renovations, rethinking about that. I know I did a lesson where I worked with the engineering class, so that would be a really good collaborative option. It's working with the engineering class and digital photography class. Review, review possible space for more pottery wheels, and then also thinking about places to set up actual spaces for kids to document work, and then obviously, just obviously, looking at the software for the computers in the graphic design room.
What, Bill, the burrow project, would that encompass the room, the designated room for art?
Yeah, it has, now, the whole, the concept of the pottery room and the kiln and all that is really outdated and quite honestly is a, an issue that we...
I don't think we have one at the elementary.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yeah, all three schools.
So, here's what I, here's what I'd say about that. We're, we're starting the process of the curriculum analysis of what has to, we're just starting that. So all of that would be part of that, what are the curriculum needs in the building?
Well, I, I was actually just, the, there's no designated room at the burrow for art, it says up there.
They share.
Right, so I was just asking, inquiring, if moving forward, if our building project at the Ahern would encompass...
I would say, as it does now, it's going to depend on enrollment and number of regular classrooms. Because, because that idea of having to share, it could happen at Taylor, it could happen at IGO, at any given time for a short period. So that unfortunately has always ebbed and flowed, because we, we can't say, there'll always be a guarantee, because if they end up with a slight population gain and we start to run more sections or grade, that, that could happen. So I would say, never say never, but it would be part of our curriculum design for the needs of the building, which we're starting to work on for the summer.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have more slides?
And then just to professional development, what we've been doing. So professional development, I broke it into three areas, instruction, assessment, and technology. Instruction, we've been looking a lot again at the adaptive arts, bringing in guest speakers to talk to us about materials and methods for teaching adaptive art classes, bringing in guest artists for community projects, and then also guest artists to talk about kiln safety and looking at mediums and materials. Assessments, big part of assessments has been DDMs, so looking at DDMs vertically. And then PD in technology, so the Office 365 suite, which has been phenomenal through this whole process with the collaborations, and then also just digital portfolios and technology.
That's wonderful, comprehensive, that was the word I was looking for before, it was comprehensive. Thank you, so it's really comprehensive.
Yep, and then just summary of going forward with professional development, again, looking at assessments, the vertical alignment of assessments, revisiting rubrics, continuing, looking at adaptive art materials, looking at multicultural lessons, again, developing that global citizen, and then best practices for teaching artistic integrity, especially where students are being constantly bombarded with visuals and Pinterest, so how do we keep them to have their own voice? And then revisiting tools and methods for studio-based practices and the eight studio habits of mind. So kind of like the social studies department with their DBQs, we are looking at the eight studio habits of mind just as a lens for all teachers and all students to see vertical alignment of their skills and their process going from elementary school to middle school to high school. So we're looking at putting these up in each of the classrooms and kind of having this common vocab going forward.
Reinforce it all the way through?
Mm-hmm.
That's wonderful.
And then our plan going forward.
You have such a detailed plan.
Very detailed.
It's very actionable, I think, very actionable.
Excellent, very impressive.
I thought it was...
Thorough, comprehensive, I like a good plan.
I think it's just another reminder, when we say we have strong arts programs here, we are talking about visual arts and music and everything else that would be in the arts, so. You can see they didn't forget a thing.
No, I can't, I can't think of a thing they haven't covered that I want to ask about. I think everything's been covered. It's amazing, very good work. Thank you for all your efforts. So, anyone, any other comments, questions?
Have a good rest this summer.
Just thank you.
Again, no, well, yes, no, thank you very much for all the hard work. This is impressive.
Well, thank you, thank you for your support. Thank you for support and community support. I mean, none of this is possible without that foundation, so thank you.
Thank you very much, nice job.
Thank you again.
Oh, and Ms. Myers-Pacla, before you leave, we wanted to thank you for all your hard work on graduation. I didn't get to say goodbye to you yesterday in the crush of people that were leaving. It was, I thought it was so, handled so marvelously and it's a wonderful day. Well, I know, you did well leading your village.
You do have a village, but it's so much work. Planning and executing graduation is just yeoman's work, and I have a lot of compliments today on it, even, you know, even though we had different doors, which we didn't want, but even compliments about how some of the parts they like better. They like seeing the cheering crowds a little bit more visually, they like seeing where the different family groups were. So I actually, you know, it was really, it was just really wonderful, Diana, thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you.
I want to take a quick second and thank you, Diana, for, for all of the support she gives us every day. I mean, really, without your okay with certain projects, we wouldn't be able to do everything that we want to do, which is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. We just appreciate everything that you all do for the students, because it's incredible. So whatever we can continue to offer and grow, that's really what we're all about, so, but thank you.
It's exciting. Well, I look forward to hearing what your plans are for AP, art history. And again, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Unless you want to.
Don't worry about whether it doesn't look polite, it's fine.
Thank you, goodbye, thank you.
So good.
That was such a presentation, it's certainly thorough, comprehensive, yeah, that was really good.
Better than really good, I have no words.
Very good. All right, so now we were ahead, we're a little behind. Maybe we'll make it up in subcommittee appointments, so moving on to our 2016, 2017 subcommittee appointments. I printed off the school committee policy on subcommittees for everyone's information, just so we remember. We don't have standing committees. We do typically vote to have a budget committee, a budget subcommittee, and a policy subcommittee. Would we like to vote to continue to have a policy subcommittee and a budget subcommittee?
I would direct that to the superintendent and business manager, if that's what they'd still like.
Well, I, I don't really think we can do without a policy subcommittee, so if you decline to have one, then we might have to chat a little further. Something, actually, it was at a meeting today that that came up, and we were going over the process of advising policies. And I think, you know, way, when the way passed prior to this, to this board, I think it showed if you didn't have an ongoing policy subcommittee, how far, how easily you can get done. Way, right. And I, I would say that's been one of the most important and one of the most helpful subcommittees for us as a district, to have that ongoing standing that we can just call you and go, because it's, it's been very important. So I would hope you would still be inclined to have a policy subcommittee.
And the budget subcommittee as well, I know, as a, as a committee member, I have found the budget subcommittee very helpful when our committee members come back and explain in greater detail what, what, what the budget process is, how it's shaping up in the fall.
The budget subcommittee is most active, say, November through, say, March, till we get past advisory committee typically, maybe February, and the policy subcommittee is active intermittently throughout the year.
Always ongoing, because the law always changes and we have to make sure that our policy manual, you know, conforms to that, so. Would anyone like to make a motion that we continue to have these two subcommittees?
I will make a motion that we have these two subcommittees.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bruce, thank you, Bevy. All in favor? Five zero, none opposed. Good, moving on, we need to decide who's going to be on the subcommittee, so. Is anybody interested in serving on the budget subcommittee?
I'll do the budget, yeah.
Do the budget again.
I'd be happy to.
Bruce, would you like to, so then I hereby appoint Marilyn and Bruce to the budget subcommittee? And Bevy, would you like to continue on the policy subcommittee?
That would be not a while.
That was my first appointment, I think, when I started, thirteen years ago.
Who knew? And I know, Chris, you, you expressed an interest in serving on the policy subcommittee, so then I would like to hereby appoint Chris Connolly and Bevy Ward to be the policy subcommittee. And it does say that the school committee chair and the superintendent are ex-officio members of all special subcommittees, so as we know, I have a sad love for policy, so I, I probably will still be involved.
The policy subcommittee often is asked to convene, to meet with staff members in our area to, to, and that could be during your workday.
Yeah, well, Chris's workday, yes.
Yes, I'm speaking to us. So that would be, there may be times where, you know, because we, we couldn't ask a staff member or seller to stay a certain hours, we might, depends how quick or short it was, depending on we do it. So there might be times where sometimes I'll, you can step in, I usually am there, so we'll just, we'll just have to let you know.
I was going to, I was going to...
It depends how meaty it is.
I was going to accept the appointment this year with the condition that I can tap our chair, because it is, she's excellent at it, it is her love and she's excellent at it.
And sometimes, sometimes it is just the two policy subcommittee members, if it's coming down from the ASC, if it's coming from, which I would call like a top-down need to revise, but sometimes it comes internally from the bottom up and if it's our, a team of ours that needs to meet to advise the committee as to what they would like to them to consider to update, then it's usually during the workday, so it depends. That's, I think, a variety of times.
I'm sure we can work it out.
Oh, yeah, oh, I just wanted to try to explain, we're gonna try to explain how these things go.
Yeah, wonderful, so we have two budget subcommittee people, and we have two policy subcommittee members, and I apparently am an ex-officio member of both, as are you.
I'm gonna call you ad hoc.
May I have one for the policy people shortly?
We have a couple of things that are still pending that we are, are still working on too, so, all good.
What about the third one?
Uh, the third one, yes, I'm getting to that. So Mr. Yukna had asked me if I would be the school committee representative to the school building committee. I thought I would just make sure there were no objections, that nobody was desiring to be the school committee appointee to the school building committee for the burrow school project. If anybody feels passionately about being on the school building committee, speak now. So my background is actually in construction law and government contracts, so I think I have good experience and would be a good fit for this committee, and I enjoy working with Mr. Yukna, as we all do.
I'll see you at the building committee.
Then I will appoint myself to be the school committee representative.
I fully recommend you appoint yourself.
And you can submit your paperwork.
It actually works out great, because everybody has a role in a subcommittee.
Absolutely, all right.
It's the double volunteer, I'll call it.
There we go, and moving on to the next volunteer project, that would be the FPS strategic plan from 2014 to 2017. I can't believe we are nearing the end.
I can't either.
Before we move on, I, I just can't, I was reading through it today, and the summation, and so much of it, we've gotten through, and I, I can't, I can't believe it's been almost three years.
It's one of those things where you say, "Did that coming up already?"
Wow.
But I think, I think one of the reasons it feels that way is in the, in the, whatever, whenever the good old days were, we tended to do five-year strategic plans, which are way too long in this day and age. So once we shortened it to three, it does cycle back awfully quickly.
But it's time.
Right, so Amy and I worked on our update, we'd like to tell you where we are, keeping in mind that it is a plan that is in effect from 2014 to 17, so we have one more year to finish meeting all of the goals and strategies in this. So just to remind people watching at home, the public, our strategic plan is organized into four broad categories, and I'll, I'll take each one separately and provide the update if, if we'll, and Amy's gonna pitch in some information about specifically where we are on some of the things. So Objective One says, "To continue to offer dynamic learning experiences within a rigorous curriculum that promote critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration, and that foster high levels of achievement for all students by preparing them to be responsible global citizens." So when you look at our three-year goals, the first one relates to, I don't think I have to read everything in detail, but it relates to narrowing the achievement gap for what the Department of Ed calls high-needs student groups, and those would be similar to low-income students, it could be students with disabilities, those students in smaller, lower language groups.
English language learners.
Right, English language learners, another one. And that we are required to monitor, analyze, and report their achievement gap each year and develop strategies that can close their, the achievement gap. So that is something you can imagine is ongoing, and I'm gonna jump a little bit back and forth between the goal and the strategies below.
Right.
So in support of that goal, specific strategies that we have employed the last two years, with the committee's support, we have increased ELA and math support for students in high-needs groups, and we have added that third elementary math specialist to provide consistent support, and definitely evaluated the model of service delivery for special education, which includes the role of educational assistance at all grade levels, so that we look at how we provide the services, not just what we provide, in terms of co-talk classrooms, inclusion services, and we've planned specific training for ed assistants in those high-needs groups so that they can more effectively service them through, when they work with students. So we have definitely completed all of those. We don't consider the goal complete, though, because it is something that we're required to report and do every year. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, and the only other thing is, when we look at some of the specific data from the Department of Ed, one of the things when it comes to numbers, by switching to the park, as an example, and piloting that last year and then with that this year, so it's looked a little bit different, so we've had difference. We've had to be flexible as we've looked at that data too.
Good point. Our second broad goal under Objective One is to increase the percentage of students who feel challenged at school. I think this was a goal that was important to the, to the committee, in that two years ago, seventy-four percent of our students in grades three through 12 reported that they feel challenged by their work at school, which is actually a pretty high percentage, so three-quarters of our students feel challenged at school. We had a rousing discussion about whether we could ever get to a hundred percent of students saying that they feel challenged at school. Probably not possible, so keep in mind that our desire to be realistic, that our, our, in, we wanted to increase by six percent. So we're hoping to get to about eighty percent, in our most recent survey results that we just got last week, seventy-seven percent of our students report feeling challenged, so we have an increase, we have one more year. We'll see what they think next year. So, and that, that's certainly a broad perception data, because if you said to any of your students, "Do you feel challenged at school?", well, it depends, in some classes, yes, in some classes, no, but they're reporting a, a broad overall perception. So it's definitely a, a soft number, would you say?
Well, that's good, it's going in the right direction.
Yes, it is.
Bevy, can I ask you a quick question on that one, is that okay? So one of the strategies is to identify structures that would support enrichment and challenge opportunities within the classroom curriculum, and it says we're completed. I'm trying to think of an example of that, Amy, can you help me with?
Um, if you think about really recently, when we had all of those different examples that were here at one of the committee meetings that Debbie had brought forward, that identified all the different ways, elementary, middle, and high, within the curriculum itself, whether it was enrichment, challenges within math or science.
That was this year.
That was this year, that was just actually in March, I think.
Was it March?
I think it was.
Okay, so that's what you're referring to.
Sometime in the last several months, that we asked all the schools to report to us, well, how are they now challenging kids within the core curriculum? Because that was the piece, if, obviously, we've talked about, that we had expanded, we spent the first year or two expanding opportunities to be enriched beyond the school day, clubs, you know, all kinds of things that increased, I think we're, ended up like ninety percent, it was a ridiculous amount. We did increase a lot of, and kids will now tell you, we don't have any kids now asking us for extra opportunities for clubs or enrichment, but, so we shifted then, so we, we did that part first, then we shifted to, do they feel enriched and challenged within the core curriculum during the school day in their core classes? And what, and that has, that is, has been increasing, that's the most recent report we had, was on in that dimension of the perception of enrichment and challenge.
Thank you.
Okay, I just thought it was me talking, I was waiting for somebody to go. So in the, the third broad goal is to include developmentally appropriate global curriculum connections in all content areas at all grade levels. And as you remember, particularly for people on the, on the strategic planning committee, we're reporting that as in progress, because that was the one area of everything we do that we felt we had the greatest distance to go. Global connections in a small suburban Massachusetts community can be challenging in terms of growing that. I think we've made pretty good progress, so we're calling it in progress. We do have a baseline that indicates where global connections are already incorporated into the curriculum, and now we're looking for opportunities for those, for those opportunities to be expanded and more clearly identified. If you want to speak to that.
I just think that we heard some examples of that in the art review tonight. You can hear in their language, them talking about, where are we connecting? And again, they're going back to the strategic plan, but it's very much alive in their curriculum and opportunities that are there. So it is a part of our vocabulary and a part of the emphasis that across departments that we're talking about.
And it was the same, last year it was social studies, right? And, and they, the same thing. And they, the same thing, and where there was a discussion of the, was it social studies?
Social studies was the year before.
What was last year's?
World Language.
World Language, that's, that's right. And there was a lot of discussion about, no, this was, yeah, Karen Fraser's-
Right.
-points on the committee, so, that's right. So, but we continue, we have continued it throughout our curriculum review process as well, the global connection piece, so.
All right, let's see, what else? So, the last part is to define the expectations for students' technology proficiency and implement technology into the curriculum. According to the ISTES, which stands for Students, International Society for Technology Education Standards for Students, there are new standards this year in 2016. So what you see down in terms of strategies, and we've made a note, there are new standards, but, so we're always providing professional development in either the ISTE teacher standards or the ISTE student standards, so that we're delivering instruction that, that meets those standards for both. So, that has been completed, and now we'll take a look at the new standards, which is shifted a little bit, but not terribly.
Well, what they've done is they've gone through to add computer science standards within those, and so those standards are being unveiled at the International National Conference.
In the end of the month.
At the end of this month, but we've already been unpacking those standards, knowing that that's going to be the direction moving forward. So just as a, as a side note, where I'd said, this is the fine arts, so, we had art review tonight, at the next school committee meeting, we'll have music, and we're going to push off the business tech ed review to the fall, due to those standards not being fully adopted and being in the midst of all of that work.
Okay, makes sense.
And I think the only one, the only strategy I may not have covered is providing staff training and cultural proficiency, which really deals with goal number one.
Yeah, that's right.
To understand that a little bit better.
And that's coming up this August. Okay.
And all, I would think it's fair to say, all the administrators have had some pretty solid training in cultural proficiency, and we're trying to bring it back down to all the teacher level. They've had some, but we want to solidify that.
Mm-hmm.
So Objective 2 is to continue to strengthen school culture, ensuring that students, staff, parents, and all stakeholders feel valued, safe, and have a voice. So, our three-year goals under this Objective 2 would be, by spring of each school year, to collect and analyze perception data about school culture and climate. And as you know, this is our sixth year of collecting, six, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, yep, that's our sixth year. And we collect and analyze perception data from students, in, students, not, not our young, young, young students, we're gonna answer something like that, but all the other students, staff at all levels, and parent guardians at all levels. And we look at that, as you know, each year, and we just got those results, so we'll try to have them shortly for you, or we may save them, we're debating on this for the fall when we open, because we do use those to establish new school and district goals around culture and climate. So, it, sometimes it's better to look at the results and say, these are the things we've picked out. So I think, at this point, we're gonna wait for that, and work on that over the summer. And in concert with that, our strategies are to always inform our school and district improvement goals in that area. We always collect baseline data, we now have six years of longitudinal data. If you remember the report from last year, the K-12 Insight, who analyzes it, said it was really a message of strength and stability, and we hope that this, this year's results maintain that, because that's, that's just the best news for a school district to have very strong outcomes for culture and climate, and for, for the data analysts to say that it represents stability over time is, is really good for a school district. So we're hoping to see what they say about that. We have our raw data right now. And based on that, we, one of our goals that we've had that come from that is goal number two, continue to foster and extend opportunities for teacher collaboration to improve instructional practice and enhance student performance. So if you remember, a few years ago, two years ago, we had sixty-three percent of teachers just acquired, reported that they have time available to collaborate with colleagues, which is absolutely critical in today's day and age. And that was one of the data points that spoke to us the last time, and this time around, two years later, we have seventy-four percent, so about three-quarters of our staff reporting they have available time, which is a great gain for us, but it's not yet, we would like a hundred percent, but again, I don't know if we can get to a hundred percent.
And just even, again, tonight was one of the top things on the list-
Right.
-that Mr. Caccia said, as far as the common planning time piece.
Right.
So it's, it is constantly there because of really what they get out of that collaboration.
Right. And we, and depending on the school schedule, our middle school has collaboration time built in, always has, since many, many, many years ago. So, it's a little bit easier to facilitate team or content-based teams to have collaboration time, because it's already built into the schedule. It has now been built into the elementary school, a little bit harder with the high school, with the rotating periods, where everybody's busy, and it's a big high school, and people are going different places. It's really difficult, for example, to have the same period off for all science teachers, because then you're really narrowing your scheduling opportunities for students, and student scheduling trumps.
Yeah.
Do you have any professional learning communities for the teachers?
Yes, at all levels.
At all levels, okay.
Yep. And in elementary, we also have, what we're considering, we call them tat data teams, teacher assistance teams, where they're looking actually at data and students that are on their radar for being concerned, and they problem solve them as a team. So it's not up to each, each teacher to say, well, I have a student I'm concerned about, what am I gonna do about it? The team processes, whether it's a social-emotional challenge, whether it's an academic challenge. So we have a couple of different types of teams, but Amy's doctorate was in PLC, so she has actually worked with all of our teacher teams at different schools to take what was happening, when she came five years ago, and, and really improve it to make it a true PLC, and assist teachers with that, so.
And I think it's always one of those things that we reflect on every year and continue to improve on, based on the needs of our students and how to best utilize the teacher time, in order to really maximize how we're problem-solving for the needs of the students before us. So, when they're looking at students as a whole, we're working with reading specialists and math specialists, everyone is there, so you have all stakeholders, if you will, there at the table.
And I would say, one of the things that I value about our professionals is that they're willing to experiment. So we have one school, the IGO school this year, with Mike Stanton's leadership, decided that they thought that some of their teams could be better, so they actually tried a different approach, and they reconfigured the structure and how the team works, and to see if they liked it better. They loved it better. The teachers felt it was better, more worth their time, they felt they got more out of it, they felt they had more assistance. So, what we have going on now toward the latter half of the year, is we have teachers coming over from the other schools to see, how did they tweak and change it, and why did they like it better, teacher to teacher? What are you getting out of it more than, versus the structure we were using? And so now we're seeing that a model that was tried, and actually, the tat started at the IGO years ago, and that migrated, and now to actually all the other schools. And now, we have a slightly different model that they're taking a risk to try out, it's being very well-received, and now it's migrating, and others are learning from it. So I think that's one of the great things about our professional teams, is they're willing to try something new, and we're also willing, if it's not the outcomes we wanted, we're like, yep, let's not do that anymore. But this is certainly, people are pretty excited about it, so I think we'll see that switching up a bit. So we don't just say, this is what we do, and then we just keep doing it. So if somebody has an idea for how to make it better, have at it, and then we can all learn from it. So that's been, been pretty powerful. I think the other thing too, that's improved the collaboration, is the Office 365. We worked really hard to get that in with the support of the, of the committee and get that all in line. So, people who may not have time, as you saw, the art teachers, K to twelve, they don't have time, they have a once-a-month department meeting, but do they have time for real collaboration? But now with Office 365, they can do it virtually. So, that online ability to collaborate has really upped our, our collaboration ante, if you will. Because now there's an expectation that if you really need to collaborate, there's no excuses, there's an opportunity for you to do so. You don't have to wait for somebody to say, well, on the second Thursday of the month, the department meets, and you gotta kind of wait for that. So we have a, a lot of online collaboration going right now, let's say. And then you can see the third strategy, to improve the outcome of the PLCs, to promote that vertical and horizontal articulation. So one new thing, Chris, that we added this year, this, which you'll see a little bit later in the evening, was one of my professional goals, is instructional rounds. That's my, that was what I thought I could do as a leader. That, one of the things I thought about last summer is that we do, I feel I offer a lot of leadership and collaboration with the people who are on the, I call it the smaller administrative team, which is our principals, assistant principals, and our central office administrators. And that's really our working admin team that meets twice a month. But we have a larger, if you consider it admin team, of our coordinators, our content directors, our team facilitators for special ed, for example, and our preschool coordinator. And all of those people are, we consider our larger administrative team, and it's really hard for me personally to provide instructional or, you know, academic, I don't wanna say leadership support to them, because there's no formal structure other than a once-a-month summer retreat. So instructional rounds is something that I started as my professional goal, so that I could do that. And we decided we would start and see how we liked it, it's been going great, we'll have a full sort of report for you at the next school committee meeting. But what we're doing is, we just brainstormed a list of what do we want to study about ourselves? What do we want to gather more information? What do we want to chat about? And then we divided into teams of the area of interest, pick whatever you want, and we went in small groups of teams all over the district. Teachers have no problem having people come in and see what they do, and we're gathering information, so that we can look at every initiative or program that we think we want to learn more about ourselves, and that's been a, a way to really provoke, promote that vertical and horizontal conversation. And again, that's, okay. Our third goal spoke to, to evaluating our guidance and mental health services at all levels, to better meet psychological, social, and emotional needs of students. So, a couple of things, we have completed that as a goal to evaluate those services, and as you know, because we completed that, we came to the committee and asked if you would support an increase in staffing at the elementary level, so that we have a full-time guidance or adjustment counselor in every one of each of our three elementary schools. In the past, we've had either a point six or a point eight, and we all know that we can't guarantee there won't be mental health or social issues on Monday through Thursday, but not on Friday, et cetera. So that's been, with your support, we've been able to achieve that for next year. So, starting in September will be the first year that we have a full-time counselor in each of the three schools. We still have a point eight at Borough this year. And Think Kids is something Dr. Einzel, our special education director, started. Think Kids, I think you heard about it, actually, we talked about it through PD-
Yeah.
-back in the, in August and September and October. Think Kids is out of Harvard, and it's a really, really powerful approach to helping kids learn problem-solving skills. We not only trained every single teacher and educational assistant in Think Kids, but we have a Think Kids leadership team that Sandra meets with, so that they continue to support people with the implementation. And it, it just makes so much sense, you wonder why somebody didn't think about it sooner. So, that's actually like a tier-one approach to helping kids regulate, self-regulate. So we've done that. We have adjusted the mental health services, when I look back at strategies. The one thing that we're gonna work on in year three is the parent workshops. So, this though follows a natural, we don't mind saying not yet, because we are working on evaluating our mental health services in schools-
Right.
-and making sure we have the staffing to address it, and now it naturally progresses to allow us-informed parents, and let's take what we do, for example, Think Kids, and let's help parents learn some of that same skill set.
Strategy, right.
So that will be a really big goal for us in the year three of this plan. And we have a school resource office for two years now, we had a successful entry plan, developed for last, beginning of last school year, and that is complete. Objective three, oh, can I move on? Is that a right thing?
Please do.
Okay. Objective three, to enhance district technological capabilities and infrastructure to provide an increasingly safe and supportive physical and academic school environment. So we have three, three-year goals under Objective Three, and one is to enhance safety and security measures in the school environment, to offer our students progressively safe and sound facilities. And that includes our cameras, it includes our drills that we conduct annually throughout the year with our Foxborough Police and Fire Department, it includes the development of our card access system, which we expect to be completed this month, certainly July the latest. So we have marked those, the goal and the strategy, as significant progress, because we still have a few pieces that we're looking to finish by the fall. We have had public safety tours of our buildings, we have improved our collaboration for an updated communication platform with our public safety officials, so I'd say they've been great partners, so I just want to compliment them, they've really been terrific and very responsive to us. Okay, I think that's it for school safety and security. Our second goal, to improve and expand the functionality and capacity of our infrastructure to support teaching and learning, to enable students to utilize dynamic technology within the classroom environment. So, we definitely want you to go back, if, on your own time, you referred to the technology plan, which is unbelievably comprehensive, but in terms of the strategic plan, we did want to complete our collaboration through Office 365 and our communication platform, which has been completed. We have definitely finished completing, increasing student and teacher access to technology tools and resources. So where we could say, two years ago, students did not have school email, teachers did not have collaboration ability on technology, and didn't have any of the things that, that we see that we now have in Office 365, and now we have arrived, and we are there. Goal three, to continue the maintenance and modernization of school buildings and facilities grounds, to promote a positive educational environment. We do now have exterior LED lighting at the Ahern and Foxborough High School. As you know, Ms. Yucna is pretty serious about any cost savings or energy efficiencies, so he's always on top of that. I'd say, I think Foxborough Public Schools has always been known for the upkeep of their school buildings, and it is something that the committee has great pride in, and you should, because we rarely let things deteriorate and get to the point of no return. So, that's why we're thrilled, you all know about the Borough School, and we've entered into the MSBA eligibility period. We always address operating inefficiencies and physically outdated systems, we do that all the time, which is, we usually update you, but they're not, you know, it's not a big goal that we have, some, so much, so far to go. I think the biggest challenge, as always, has been to complete the campus here at Foxborough High School, when we look at that goal. So, we have been taking, I don't even call them baby steps, I'll say actual steps, how about adult-sized steps? So, through the support of the town, we have the balance of the funds, and we have to thank, first of all, the over twenty-five thousand dollar private contributors from our community, and we will have a full report on that as we finish it, hopefully this, this summer. But that really got the jumpstart, to say so many people are really fully invested in the next step. So with the balance being funded through capital, we expect to build the concession stand with public bathrooms at the turf field here. Goes without saying how important public bathrooms will be to an outdoor facility that has extensive use by community and school members.
And when is that going to commence?
It's, we hope to have a design this summer, and we hope to begin building this summer. Is that fair? I'll say begin building. The, I think we are less certain about when it will be completed.
Right.
We have some designs, we're, basic designs, we're very interested in, and we'll see.
Great, thank you.
And then, as we, everybody knows, we still have expensive items in the-
The tractors.
And the bleachers to come. Then, then you really will be in a, in a good position to say, we really have no major facilities needs, and that will be a real milestone, I think, for this community.
Which one, we can all retire.
Yes, well, I don't know. I hope to see it, but I don't know.
Can't retire till end of-
Well, where, where are we at now, adult steps? I think we, we need like, the Jolly Green Giant-type steps for those. If anybody has any ideas how to get some mega dollars to finish those, that would be great.
I'll keep playing the lottery.
Okay. And then, that's a commitment, that if she wins it, it's gonna be on track.
If I win Powerball, there you go.
Objective four, to maintain, maintain strong support for public education within the town of Foxborough. I think in my own mind about this objective as the one that rarely changes in its wording, but is the most important always, and without this, the other objectives are for naught. So our goals continue to be fiscal responsibility, we review per pupil expenditures publicly, we try to make it a good value for the dollar, so we're always looking at our achievement and the value that the taxpayers here in Foxborough get for the education that we provide. I think we're really proud about the transparency of our budget process and the increased accessibility to the public. We make every bit of information available, and we're quite transparent about everything that we do financially. We want to continue to foster mutually beneficial partnerships with local businesses and community agencies. And I think that that has been another hallmark of Foxborough. We can always look to expand more. Our GISTIC Report Card, which is in the fourth year, I believe, now called the Community Report, has been great to communicate with stakeholders about the things that go on here. And what the value for the dollar is, if you will, how we define that, how we look at it, and that goes, that is mailed out each January. We're pretty public about our student achievement data, so that people know that we have good things going on here. And if you're a realtor in town, you have great things to show people who are interested in coming here, especially if they're interested in schools. We try to use our website, we call this one Ongoing, because we have made some great enhancements to our public communication. We have photos, we have videos, we have information about extracurricular and social news from the district. And I say, when I look at other districts' websites, our website is still much better than most. But, we do want to, I've said it many times, we want a new platform. We don't have the capacity for the RSS feed, you'll see that in my update as well, on my performance review. We need to, we've done so many other things, and that has to follow something else, but we hope to establish that in, I don't know, some period, short period of time, hopefully, because this current platform does not support that. So, that's, I'd say, our last piece, you're going to hear about that in a little bit, too. I think the Twitter has, the Twitter accounts really helped, it certainly has helped me. I think we look for many ways to recognize our community partners and always look for new things to do. Our intergenerational connections continue. A week, oh, this Friday, this Friday is our annual Senior Assistant Visiting Day. We're calling it Spring Into Schools. And they are going to visit the entire morning of Grade Six STEM Day at the Ahern, and we're going to stay there. So, that should be a great day. I hope to see some of you there, who have expressed interest in coming. And Janet, remind me to call the senior assistant tomorrow and ask for their numbers so that we can order lunch.
Okay, will do.
Let's see. The last strategy, well, because this goes with all the goals, promoting Foxborough Public Schools within the town and maintaining taxpayer support. So, this has been a little elusive, so we always want to develop people of expertise in the business community or the residential community who can come into schools. So, what we've learned by dabbling in it is that, I thought I had a great idea, Speakers' Bureau. And as you know, over the years, I've only gotten four people to put in their names. So, what we've really learned is, to have some district-wide pool doesn't work. What does work, and I think we've had many examples of success in the art department, I'll tell you that, is when there's a connection to something specific of interest, so that the people come with the expertise, so the artists will come to the art department, the mathematicians will go to the math department, we have scientists that connect with the high school science department, chemists, for example. So, what we've had more luck is school or department-based connections. And so, always learn from what you try. If that is more effective and expands our pool of experts coming in, then that's the direction we're going in. So, we're calling that Ongoing with a tweak of a right turn instead of going down the middle of the road. So, I think we have a few things still to work on in year three, but I was pleased with the amount of progress we made in the first two years. And we will be forming a strategic planning committee, probably in February.
For the next round.
Correct.
I've already had one dedicated volunteer, volunteer for the next round, so, yep.
It's been helpful if we have people that have experienced it before, because I think you understand the process and can help us.
It's good to have a mix, though, too. I think it is good to have people who have been through the process, but we also had some first-timers the last time around, and they had great and innovative ideas, so worked great. Good mix of community members, faculty, school committee members.
Some with experience and some new to, is always great.
Questions? Mrs. Spinelli about the, Dr. Beardo, anyone?
Good update.
Excellent update. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is the review of the superintendent evaluation process.
Once again, is it that time of year again?
It's that time of year again. Six months.
Okay. So, the process we've been following seems to work, unless the committee would like to do it a little bit differently, I'm open to that certainly as well. What seems to have worked the last couple of years, so that is, I put in sort of a recap of what we've done, is that at the first meeting in June, hence tonight, I provide an overview of the process, the forms, and what will occur in the next few weeks, leading into hopefully the completion of evaluation in July. So, the way we've done this in the past is that tonight, we look at an overview of the five-step cycle, which has existed for the last four years since the Department of Ed implemented a new educator evaluation system in Massachusetts. We hear a lot about it for the teachers, it's exactly the same for superintendents and principals and everything else. So, the process starts with self-assessment, which you'll see tonight, analysis, goal-setting, and plan development. And usually for me, I wait till after the July goal-setting retreat of the committee, because I like to take some of the direction for my goals from what you're interested in as a committee, and work on some of those things myself. So, usually in August, I develop some goals, and when we come back, starting at the end of the summer, then you will be getting my suggestions for goals next year. And anybody who has any input on what you'd like to see me think about is always welcome. Then we implement the plan in mid-year, which you just had in February. That's mid-cycle, we call it. You have formative assessment and evaluation. And that has worked really pretty well for the last couple of years to focus that, I focused that around the three questions that I think Mr. Gardner suggested several years ago, which is, what's gone, what am I most proud of so far? What am I working really hard on, whether I'm successful or not? And what, what am I most proud, what am I working hard on, and where, whatever the third one is.
Challenge.
Is it challenge? Oh, yeah, maybe it's challenge, that's what it is.
They're great questions.
And now it's my challenge to remember the three questions. So, that's worked really well for the mid-cycle, because it allows me to focus on the important aspects of the standards of the goals, without boring you with every last detail. So, that's what we do at mid-cycle for, who is committee member Chris. And then, the summative evaluation occurs in July. So, what happens in, what, the first year or two, I think I provided you with the big binder, if you remember, I don't think anybody has saved them as a relic, but they were really huge binders where I went through every performance standard on the part of the superintendent, and I provided with written evidence of how well I'm meeting those standards. It's a lot to look at, it's more than you felt you needed to look at. I think it, for me, I will still say it was a good educational process, so that we all understand all the standards that are in there, because we didn't speak the language, none of us did, when the educator evaluation system came into play. So, now I think that we all speak the language a little bit more fluently. What we've done the last few years is, instead of giving you the big binder where I kill several trees, what I've tended to do for you at this point is I provide you with an update on my goals and my own self-assessment broadly, within each of the four standards, as to what really has happened this year that I'd like to highlight. That being said, what has also been helpful is if any committee member between now and the next meeting would like to personally see specific pieces of hard evidence related to any of the standards, I certainly will provide that. If there's a general feeling among the committee tonight that you'd like me to bring evidence under any particular thing, I can bring it back for the whole group. So, it really depends how you feel about that. So, I'll go over that last. The, what I always put in every year is this lovely document, the Massachusetts Model System of Educator Evaluation, Part Six, Implementation Guide for the Superintendent Evaluation. And this was developed by the Department of Ed in January of 2012, so that was four years ago. And this really is a very detailed overview of how the superintendent evaluation system works in Massachusetts. And, okay, and they put in, they put in there summative forms, which they're suggesting to use, and I do use those same forms we have. So, what you will see, however, in the next section, End of Cycle Summative Evaluation Report Superintendent, 2015-16 School Year, forms, that little lovely thing. What that is, is the Department of Ed forms that I have already taken and customized for you to consider. So, it's the exact same thing you would have seen in the overview, but I typed in my name. And what typically happens is the cover sheet is sort of a summary sheet, so even though it looks like step one, step two, this is actually the summary sheet, so this is the better sheet to do last, when you do your individual one. Actually, pages one and two are the summary sheet. So, my suggestion when you're considering is leave that till last. The third page are my goals for this year. And I provide you with my own update on how I think I did, but this has just the goals, pure and simply stated, as they were originally, for you to assess yourself. And then, following the goals, two pages, each page, there are four pages next, each page for each standard. So, it's standard, on page five, it's standard one, instructional leadership, the exact standards from the Department of Ed, and opportunity for you to rate and comment, following, standard two, standard three, standard four. So, that's what your forms look like, no different than they have the last few years.
At this point, I wanted, just wanted to interject that Mr. Newton will be evaluating you for this coming year. Chris will participate as a new member, but not have the official evaluation. And Janet was going to get Steve a copy of everything that we have tonight.
That's what happened last year.
So, that's the way this.
Yeah, that's the way it happened.
It's the person who served the whole year.
Served the whole year.
But, you know, the newest member is welcome to meet with me and just talk about some of these things, get familiar with it, so we can do that individually.
And I think I did that when I was first on the committee, sat down with you and did that. It was very helpful, and I read the whole big binder. I was on the committee your first evaluation year. I didn't have to fill it out, but I read the whole binder. But, I just wanted to, before we went on, just make sure.
Was it as painful for you as it was for me?
You know what, actually, I'm glad we don't do that every year, but as a new committee member and not an educator, Chris was telling me, he participates as a teacher in the evaluation of the superintendent in Brockton, so he has some familiarity with the process, but I did not when I came in. So, I found it very interesting to see and a very impressive body of information, so it was helpful to me then, but I don't feel the need to have a big binder every year.
I do agree. It was helpful for all of us to have a thorough understanding of the standard.
Exactly. I just wanted to interject that.
Sure.
Continue, please.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, unless there are any other questions, sorry.
Okay. So, I don't belabor this. So, here are the goals that I had for this year. The professional practice goal, actually, I just mentioned in the last segment, which is my instructional rounds, leadership, to provide targeted leadership development to the larger team, and you'll hear more of that at the next meeting. And at this next meeting, we also continue discussion on the superintendent's evaluation as well, so that everybody has two opportunities to make sure you have everything you need, ask me questions, et cetera. The second goal, this is one Amy and I shared, as we discussed back when I set the goal, the English-language learner student population has been growing in Foxborough, and even though it's a small group, it is a group that, as I said, I feel it really deserves my attention. So, it is one of our high-risk groups. I personally feel more comfortable, and I'm fully informed about the needs of all the students in the district. And so, I'm really glad I selected this as a goal, because I learned a lot through the process that we, that we shared. And so, we've had the report already completed and shared here, where implementation is in process, so that goal has been met. And hence, budgetary considerations being part of it, we've already come to you with the recommendation to add a .5 YLL teacher for next year, and that was supported by the committee, and we're in the process of hiring that person. Actually, this week, hopefully, I'll get that wrapped up. I have two district improvement goals, and one was continued from the last year or two, which is computer science. This, as you know, was a very challenging goal to make happen. Computer science is a difficult high school course to maintain its currency in, it changes as we speak. And so, the goal was to have a computer science course in place for this year, didn't happen, so now I just renewed the goal for September 2016. And it, we had it in place and identified in time to get it in the program of studies in January. Enrollment has been rigorous. So, I'm really happy about that. So, in addition to finally getting the computer science course, which, by the way, we send two faculty members to training in the summer, it's a week-long training to teach the course. In addition to that, we've made related progress. So, last summer, I connected with a computer science company, which is running, which ran last year for the first time, a computer science summer camp. That was so fully enrolled, we're actually offering two separate weeks this summer. And that's all enrolling. It's been wonderful. That same, that same group has been offering computer science after-school camps at all of our schools, elementary and middle, and that enrollment has gone well. And they've actually, in some schools, offered it three times, fall, winter, spring, and some twice. And I think one school picked computer science and chess, I think they were doing the other one, but some schools already had chess. So, the same, so we've really been able to expand those opportunities for kids, I'm pretty excited about that. And then, the next district improvement goal, which I do keep every year, I'll have to think about it for next year, to continue to expand outreach and communication to community groups and other constituents to build support. So, I checked off, it's not a typo, that I checked both significant progress and met, because if you take out the RSS feed, which is entirely dependent on a new main website platform, then everything else has been met. But that one thing, which isn't something I personally can do, clearly, it's not my wheelhouse, everything else has been met. So, we certainly have a very active Twitter account, it's ongoing and active, we have our Senior Assistant Visiting Day again. This year, I was asked to speak at Rotary Club, and that is a nice connection that I've made, and we hope to continue doing things with Rotary. And we actually have some plans. And that's, the only piece that's really left is the district website RSS feed, which I hope you will be hearing good things about in the fall. But, stay tuned. And then, under other, is the fifth goal, which is related to what we just heard in the strategic plan. So, as you can see, especially to our newest member, some of the goals come from items of interest that the committee has, some comes from items of interest I have, for example, the instructional leadership. And sometimes it comes from the strategic plan, that certainly we found, we can't have plans that exist in silos. So, if there's a, if there's a relationship between the strategic plan and the work of the department, so the work of the administrative team, that we all are constantly focused on how we contribute to those things. So, that's why this is on there, so that we can move ahead with our plans for the, that are related to the strategic plan. Okay. Questions about the goals? Moving right along, slowly. Superintendent's self-evaluation. For the standards, this is very similar to what we did last year, which is, I have to, I rate where I think I am. And as I said last year, I'm not sure that I have a lot of movement in terms of where I rated myself on the proficiency standards, ratings, because I think every, I think as administrators or even as teachers, we have relative strengths and weaknesses. As I may have said in my graduation speech, perfection isn't the goal, I don't think I'll ever be, you know, the highest rating for everything, because we are people and we have relative strengths and needs. So, I don't see myself necessarily shifting each year. What I see is that I'm working harder on certain things, but doesn't necessarily, wouldn't rate myself as better at them necessarily, even just because I'm working harder on something. What I try to do in the comments is to comment on what may be different this year, or what may be continued, or even if it's continued, something we're working hard on and a new aspect of that. And I would say, under standard one, you can see that my work with principals and their roles as educational leaders is very important to me, and how they approach evaluating their staff and their supervisory role. One of the things I've personally taken responsibility since last summer, we have a new evaluation tool for educational assistants, and the professional development that we had for them in August, I was a part of, and I've been following up with them, and we're going to follow up at the end of the year in the summer to see how it's gone for them, to see if we're going to tweak it a little bit. It does mirror the teacher's evaluation tool, so that was a huge philosophical and experiential shift for educational assistance. And we can't really collect data on that, you won't see me saying how well it went, because their evaluation cycle is not over yet. So, we want them to experience the full cycle of not only participating and understanding the standards and having the principal supervise the standards, but what does their final evaluation report look like? How do they feel about it? Or what, do they feel they got better information? Do they feel they understand the principal's expectations a little bit better than the old checklist, which nobody said was any good at all? So, we need to get that complete cycle of feedback, so we're going to be collecting that in August, and that will tell me what we need to do next year. That is something that's personally important to me, is that, we have, that's our second largest group after teachers. So, that's something I worked very hard on this year, that I will continue to focus on, because it's very important, they're just a key part of everything that we do. Let's see. I guess that's it for that one. Under management and operations, some of the comments that I made really is that we have really, we have made some really good improvements in our school's safety and security measures, and continue to do so, and I am really proud of that, because nothing is more important. As in the past, however, personnel, human resources management continues to be a large focus of my work, and quite honestly, of my time. As a superintendent, it's important, every cog in the wheel matters, and the quality of that cog in the wheel matters to me a lot. So, I stay very involved in personnel and human resource issues. We don't have an HR department or even an HR person. So, as you know, that's a large part of what I do in addition to working with all of the people on our team. We have had some key positions this year that I think has created that, you know, a new opportunity to really manage the HR process really well and be proud of that change. And the opportunities come when someone retires, and in Joe's case, he didn't really make it to the retirement, which is, has been really difficult. We do have a new assistant principal in place for the high school, his name is David Pierce, I think I mentioned that last time. As of today, we have a new food service director. My name is Janice Watt. She is actually president of the School Nutrition Association currently, so she is a leader in her field. She worked 16 years in Uxbridge, she's been in Sharon for two years, and she will be coming to us this summer.
Fantastic.
She is, I think, got exactly the balance we were hoping for, which is the management side, management operations, she has many, many years of experience with that, and the school nutrition and wellness component, because she is that position, co-chairs the wellness committee, and that will be really key to us moving forward, and we, Bill was key in screening the people. And I think we're both, I don't know if you want to say anything about it, we're just both really happy with the outcome.
No, I think, I actually said it years ago, when Allison first came here, actually, actually I had tried to chase after her to get her to come here. Because at the time, I had actually seen her at one of the Masbo conferences. And she was doing a whole thing for the school nutrition. It was at the time we were all making the big change in the, in the program. And she was just, really came up with a lot of innovative concepts. A number of those we brought back to here. And actually, the smoothie was one of them that, you know, she was actually showing there. Allison adopted it fairly quickly and, and things of that nature. Like Allison, she has all the skillset relative to grants and, and, you know, procurement and stuff like that. But she also has the experience, which will, I think, you know, help both our food service program as well as, as Deb said, the nutrition side. So I, I think she's going to be a great addition and comes very highly recommended from everybody she's, you know, worked with and for, so.
Good to hear.
And from your observation.
Oh, I, I think she's, she'll, she'll be very good.
Great, thank you.
How did we woo her?
I think Bill wooed her. So it's just, so it's like, we're very like-minded like that. So if there's somebody really, we think, really, we're like, so if she wasn't prepared to make a move four years ago, here we are. So never say never. But I think that, that type of person who's key and, and has the expertise, experience and the confidence to be presenting to business managers to say, here's how your food service should run. Here's something you can do to instant quality and look at your cost effect. She's going to be terrific and she's got a terrific personality as well. So I have great hopes for that.
And she begins?
This summer, yeah, right away. Athletic director, we're in process of, the high school does the screening for that and the, basically the recommendation for the finalists, if you will. But they clearly, we're not going to do that before graduation. So this is the week they're getting started a little bit more aggressively on the screening. I'll be seeing them tomorrow morning and see how they're progressing with that. So we do not have a new athletic director yet. We have a new special education department head at Foxborough High School. Her name is Nancy McNally.
McNally?
Yes, Nancy McNally. And the great thing that they, that's also a position that is, the high school has had a lot, the most positions to fill this year. And they've been working quite diligently about it. And when they sent her to me as a finalist, I would say, I can see why the teams sent her as a finalist. Because she's currently working at one of the private schools, the Beacon High School, which is the Walker School partnerships. Walker School is one of the most well-respected private placements for students with disabilities. And they actually, they're our training partner. So the Walker School is actually the, the group that comes in as a consult for us, for our therapeutic behavior programs. So they're the ones that come in and help us customize behavior programs for our students who need that kind of regulation. So she is currently an administrator at their high school, Beacon High School. So she's got that on the other side experience. And she, it was very impressive in understanding what does a school district have to do to provide those services in-house so that you don't have the need to go out. So she's got just a great background and I'm looking forward to working with her as part of our larger team.
Excellent.
Yes. And an assistant facilities manager, which is a shared position with the town. So if you recall, a few months ago, we explained that Bill and the town finance people have been working on a plan to consolidate services for the cost-saving of the entire town, just like we did several years ago with technology. We've now, with Bill's work, consolidated the facilities. So our Tony Masali is actually overseeing all of the maintenance, facilities and maintenance of all the town public buildings as well. And so that arrangement is exactly the same. And with that, when, when we consolidate with the town, even though they are still going to be employed by us and supervised by Bill, both, both technology and facilities, but it comes with a town shared position. So that position for us is, for us, when I say us, town and schools, is an assistant facilities manager. Now we've doubled the number of buildings that they oversee. And they are going to coordinate all of the, all of, all of the facilities management and maintenance at all the buildings. So just last Friday, we hired Carl Fuller, who's a local resident, who's going to be the assistant facilities manager, working under Tony. He's going to be a great addition. He's got a lot of hands on, Carl Fuller. He's a graduate of Foxborough, actually.
Okay, or a C?
C.
C.
Thank you.
Yes. So those have really been key positions. And I would say that
I would say so.
In a year, we're also in negotiations with six of our nine unions. And we've had some key positions to fill. So I do feel like that's, this is an area that I personally have devoted a lot of time and attention to, to the, just to grow the talent in our district and to really hopefully create, you know, more strength in our team across the district and to really attract quality people. We've had really deep and strong applicant pools and we continue to be proud of that. In terms of school finance, I did talk about our continuing and ongoing very good relationship with the town finance department, the town manager, the advisory committee. And our school committee shares in that to ensure transparency in our budget process. And as we know, our school budget and CIP request passed at town meeting with confidence of the community. And we all appreciate and do not take for granted the confidence that the community has in us to run the schools in a fiscally sound yet way that's, we're always focused on continuing, continuing improvement. I, I think one of the things I did want to call out because we've been so inundated with negotiations this year is that, you know, we have nine associations in our district, which I don't think people understand we have that many. And then we have people on individual contracts. So it's a pretty big operation. And I can proudly say that we do all of that without attorneys present. So in addition to number one benefit of that, and you know, we have committee members here who sit on the teachers' negotiation and we have two others that have sat on the ed assistance. The other seven associations, Bill and I do together, the two of us do those together. And I will say, the number one reason for doing that is to maintain the trust and the ability to have professional dialogue even when you disagree. And I think we've all experienced that, but we continue to stay at the table. And the fact that they don't bring representatives, we don't bring attorneys, really means the dialogue can be personal, local and meaty. But we can't ignore that it's also a cost savings. So we don't, in, you know, in the years of negotiations, you won't see our budget reflecting a greater legal, legal line item because we anticipate so many hours going to negotiations. And I think you would see that in most districts who expect and incur more legal fees in the year when you're in negotiations. So you never see that because it does, which doesn't mean we don't have to send the attorney certain language and say, this is what our interest is, can you make sure we have it worded right? But that kind of hour, every once in a while consult doesn't really equate to an attorney sitting at the table for multiple bargaining.
I've been in negotiations.
Yeah, so I thought I might want to mention that since I'm in a year where we have a lot of, a lot of time and the rest of that. Uh, let's see, oh, come on. Borough school and MSBA cannot go unmentioned since third time was a charm. Standard three, family and community engagement. I think, again, this is something I continuously work on. I try to think of new ways. Every year, we've already talked about that. I've already mentioned all of these actually. Every year I try to think of, I try to, it's sort of like the old, well, I'm dating myself. Remember the old Ed Sullivan Show with the plate spinning on the end of the stick? And then if it faltered, you had to run back and spin it again. So that's kind of the way I view community outreach, that I want to keep all the plates spinning. But each year I try to add a new plate and start it spinning and then keep the rest going. So I'm going, if you have any suggestions, this is how I can expand my community outreach or communication. That would be very welcome as I try to think outside the box for next year. Standard four is professional culture. Clearly, this is the thing I'm most proud of. It is unusual to work in a district where we have a high level of trust, where problem solving is our way of being, not something that's in response to an emergency or a crisis. We have a problem-solving attitude. And I always say, no, no problem is too large or too small for any one of our staff members to notice and tackle. And I think that's why we get where we get with the culture of trust and the culture of good relationships. Because we don't ignore, if there's something small that's impacting our teacher's life at school or our students, whatever, we'll get right on it and, and solve it right away. And because every, those little bits of attention do matter. You'll be hearing more about instructional rounds, so no need to go on about that. All right. That's where I think I am as of today.
Thank you.
Is there anything that the committee would like to see me bring back next time for further review or consideration?
Not that I can think of, but do you want to talk about the timeline you'd like us to follow for input?
Yes.
Well, it looks like our, our July meeting, if we want to work backwards, will be the 18th, which I know it doesn't work for you, but it does work for the rest of the committee. So working backward from that, if we could have all of the evaluations done and to me, maybe by, you know, the end of June, first week in July.
Wow, I would, okay, very good. So then, so how that happens is that individual committee members do their own individual evaluation independently and then have an individual meeting with me and we discuss it. That, I will say, I know not all superintendents do it, but I learn so much. Because it may, it may or may not, what you have to say to me may or may not end up in the, in the composite. But I learn a lot each time about how individually, individuals view how I'm doing. Or something of interest to you that may be not big enough to put on the sum, but something that you'd like me to work on personally. So I really do learn a lot and enjoy those individuals. So I will have, for example, appointment with Bevy and she'll have her evaluation and we discuss everything on it. Do the same with everybody. And then it's submitted to Tina, the chair writes the composite.
I'm just looking at my calendar. Maybe if we could get the evaluations to me by July 8th, which is a Friday, that would give me time to compile them into the composite evaluation document for the July meeting.
So we'll have already met with her by that point?
Yeah, you should, you should make your appointment with Mrs. McNally.
Most people come with kind of a rough draft. And then talk, and then after we talk, you finalize.
Is there any way we could get the evaluation forms by PDF so that we could fit more in there?
I can send you what I have. And then you can download it and you can write on it.
I know my, I, I might be able to fit more in if I was typing as opposed to.
I'll send you the exact form I customized. I will send it to each member and you can do that.
Okay, I was just thinking about that.
The boxes do expand, so if you, if you type a lot and it jumps to the next page, then you can leave it that way or it's all good.
If, if, if it would be possible to do that, that might be helpful.
I will do that, yep.
All right.
If you want to write by hand, though, that's fine too.
That is fine too.
Whatever.
I know I run out of space, sorry. Yes, Joe, do you have a question?
The workshop meeting definitely on the 18th?
Yes, it's going to be on the 18th. I think we'll start at 6:00 in the evening. I'm sorry, what? It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting, so.
Was that the chapel?
Yes.
Last year, we also had an executive session. That's what you're thinking.
I'm hoping, like, the year before was at the, it was on the bigger thing.
Oh, yeah, no, it'll be in the chapel.
I like the chapel much better.
All right, thank you. That's where we'll be this year.
Okay.
Good.
Does that one get a brand food?
Yes, we'll have some snacks as well.
Oh, actually, let's ask right now.
I'm not going to be there, I was kidding.
Do you want snacks or sandwiches and salad? Because we've had both and then I don't want people to show up disappointed. Wrap sandwiches and a salad?
I think if we're starting at 6, we could have sandwiches and call it down.
Wrap sandwiches and salads it is, Jen.
Perfect.
What about fruit and stuff like that?
Good idea.
That's healthy.
And fruit. Wraps, salad and fruit. I like fruit too.
How about smoothies?
I wonder what the July founder's day.
Let's not get carried away, all right. We're already way over our agenda schedule. So I think we have a, a plan for the evaluation process. We have our, our goal-setting meeting set. And we're going to talk some more about the superintendent's evaluation at our next meeting, so.
And if you were so inclined to wait till after the last day of school to meet with me, that would probably be a favor, but it's not necessary. But if, if you want to get a jumpstart, you may meet with me sooner. But personally, I have much more time after July 20th.
I think we all agree with that.
I can arrange my schedule around that.
Yes, can I?
Thank you.
Anything else on superintendent's evaluation? Okay, then let's move on to the very exciting 2016-2017 plumbing bid. Bill?
Plumbing.
Because you sounded like it really doesn't mean much to you, but all right.
Oh, it means a lot to me.
We, last year, we, we actually put most of our.
But if you had a plumbing problem.
Precisely.
We put most of our services out to bid for a three-year. And the only one that we didn't get last year is a three-year was the plumbing bid. So we ended up accepting the three-year for everything else. And then we rebid plumbing this year. Thrasher was the one that we had this year. And as you can see, Boston Mechanical is significantly below on a rate basis. Because we don't know Boston, you know, Mechanical, they have gotten very good references from Boston Public Schools where they worked for a period of time. And, you know, so I'm comfortable with them as a, as a company. But I think at this point, I'm only going to recommend the one year. Hopefully, everything works well. And then, you know, they're obviously very interested. They're a union shop under local 112. And they do have, one of the advantages they do bring to us that most smaller plumbing services don't have, and that is the ability to draw on that larger group to be able to do things like backflow preventers, sprinkler systems and stuff like that. And that's nice so that, you know, you can, it's the one-stop shop type of thing. As compared to now, we have to go to three different groups that are licensed to do that type of work or insured to do that type of work, so. So my recommendation is Boston Mechanical for a one-year bid at the rates of $79 for a license and $39 for an apprentice.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor of accepting Boston Mechanical? Five zero, any opposed? No, five zero.
Start is the budget summary. I assume you want to jump right into that.
Yes, I do.
Only real change are the changes that you'll see in green on your sheets in color. The technology, originally, we were overspent by about $27,000 under the assistance position. But because of replacements with two of the staff members, obviously, there was a break in staff for a period of time before we were able to rehire, so there was a savings there. And our rates were slightly lower on the new hires. So actually, we're almost at, you know, even at this point now. So we picked up a few dollars on that line, which is under technology. Under the transportation side, the fuel has maintained itself at a very low rate. And as you can see, I'm projecting right now that we'll have about an $88,000 savings this year. Unfortunately, we're starting to see the uptick already towards next year. So I'm a little concerned about that line. And I did speak to Randy about it already because there was a big push to drop not only ours, but every other budget for town down because of what we're seeing for current rates. Anyway, that $88,000, previously, you approved two purchased vehicles. One was a pickup truck which we bought quite some time ago. The other one was at your, about a month ago, we, we purchased the van for the maintenance department. And then the third vehicle that I was holding off on, waiting to see what this, this thing would come in was, which we have already gotten approved by the CIP, so I'm just looking for your approval on it. But I've included it in this number so you can see how it affects the bottom line. And that is a $26,000, what I'm calling food service transportation van. If you recall, Diane Paco Myers has asked a number of times to have a way of being able to transport small groups, which we've never really had. So something like where you would send maybe a debate team or a, even just a couple tennis players or a couple golfers to a, a specific event. We've either had to use teachers' vehicles or, you know, rent a van to go type thing. So what I thought would be a wise move for us on this side would be to buy a van that could double purpose. We do transport a lot of food products between schools, so we do need the van. So what I'm getting is a, recommending is an eight-passenger vehicle. It's under the requirement for 7D license of virtually any one of our teachers with our permission and, and putting them on our, our insurance from the town side could drive the vehicle. And to transport kids and then during the day, it could be our courier vehicle as well. So it, it will serve two purposes. And I think the other one is about a 13-year-old vehicle with significant rust and rot and it's time to go. So, so that's $26,059 and I'd look for your approval on that.
Could you just clarify why the students would need to be transported from, for, for what purpose? I guess I'm missing that.
To go to, to go to a competition, to go to a sporting event or something that's going on there.
Maybe two golfers or a couple tennis players for a special event.
Why would they be going special? I don't remember this ever happening, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, it happens all the time.
Oh, yeah, all the time.
For just a couple of students?
Well, there might be like a small field trip that.
There's one child, there's one kid going that got offered to an invitational down in Connecticut for track. This is actually in a week, all right? The coach is going, the child's going. Do you want him to go in the, the coach's car or would you rather have him go in our vehicle that we own and insure control?
And sometimes, sometimes certain teachers with courses are taking kids to like a, a smaller field trip where it's just taking a few kids from, say, a business class or something to go see something.
Of course, it's a big bus being paid.
Yeah, we're using big buses.
Senior Inc., perfect group that would go, potentially would go out to the thing. So that's why there's a lot of potential for this. But again, I, I wouldn't do it in any vehicles we currently own, so.
And they need to be safe.
And that, that amount was $26,000?
$59, yep.
It gives us such greater flexibility instead of ordering a big bus all the time.
Yes, yeah. And, and quite honestly, the bigger bu, any of the buses that we run for our transportation side requires that 7D license. So that has to be a licensed bus driver that can actually deal with that, which.
And then you're restricted by the other runs that they have to get back for, so that doesn't always work.
The, beyond that, so we're still going to have about a $23,000 surplus at this point. But yet, you know, the, the thing is, obviously, we're in the closure part of all of our expense budgets. Everybody is basically knows that this week was kind of the close-off week for purchase orders. So we will be looking through the expense accounts at the beginning of next week to find out if there's any other funds available. We are also. We are also, obviously, in the process on the salary side of closing down any of the issues. A lot of the stuff that virtually happened through the last payroll is, you know, your teams and mentors and things of that nature, so we still won't know the final numbers there. So we're expecting a few extra dollars from that side, too. We do have one thing that I'm going to recommend in our end-of-year spending, and that is that the language lab software upgrade, which is about $16,500. And we finally have picked the, the company we're, we're going to deal with, and so we're going to need to do that. So, but we still are at $23,000 today, and I expect that to improve over the next few weeks, so we should be in good shape.
I'll make a motion to approve the food service/transportation van and the amount of $26,000 and change.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Five, zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
No votes? Thank you, five, zero. Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
This, this actually might be a good time to mention that Bill Kelly, who's been driving our food service van for many, many years now, he just submitted his decision to retire. He's been thinking about it for a while, he's had some ups and downs. So while we can thank him verbally, I think we'll write him a nice letter.
That would be nice.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, moving on to acceptance of donations.
Yes, we have two generous donations. The first is from the Bellinger family, in the amount of $500 to the Foxborough High School, class of 2018, toward all of the wonderful events they have upcoming. Very thoughtful and generous.
I'll make a motion that we accept this donation in the amount of $500 for the Foxborough High School class of 2018.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Seven, four, I'm going to abstain from this one, since it's a donation. So, all right. So four, zero, one. My pleasure.
Thank you to the anonymous Bellinger family. The second donation is from the Wampanoag Roadrunners, and is to the Foxborough High School Track, cross-country and track team, in the amount of $1,000 to support their boosters.
That's fantastic.
They do this every year, they're an amazing organization.
It's a very generous contribution.
I'm going to accept the amount of $1,000 from Wampanoag Roadrunners for the Foxborough High School Track.
Second.
All in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Many thanks.
Thank you. Before we move on from acceptance of donations, maybe this would be a good time to mention as a donation of goods, almost a labor of love, from Mr. DeVellis, our selectman, had mentioned to me that Billy Mata and Mata Landscaping, we landscaped the Sam Burns Garden a couple weeks ago. So I just wanted, on behalf of the committee, to thank Mr. Mata and his workers for doing that. It looks lovely, and I think they just came up and took care of it without being asked, and because
He's terrific.
Yeah. So maybe we could send him a nice letter, thank you, Mr. Mata.
We only ask him the Sam Burns Memorial Garden, is that what we call it, I think? We're dedicated, yeah.
That was the class of 2015 gift, and they had hired Mata Landscaping to do the work. And he just came back this spring and spruced it up and mulched, and it looks very, very nice out there.
I'll have to walk out myself and see.
So just wanted to mention that. All right, moving on to other matters. Does anybody have anything? Mrs. McNally?
Talked about graduation, congratulations, Joe Garrity, on your graduation. And it was really special to meet your kindergarten teacher, who came all the way from Minnesota.
My kindergarten Boston mother.
Minnesota.
It was my Boston mother, but she was a sixth-grade math teacher.
Oh, well, she was amazing to meet, and now she's my new friend. So I think that's just, you know, so many of our graduate, graduates deserve that kind of, you know, inspiring support, and you are no different, Joe.
She was here earlier, too.
Yeah.
That's great.
In the room?
Up, up front.
Up front.
I met her up front today.
That's wonderful. Congratulations to Joe and the entire class.
And I guess, since we're thanking students, let's congratulate our two student reps who are, I told them, don't you dare show up the night after their own party, Melissa Lynch and Macal and Rinkus, who also graduated, so we'll be having two new student reps at the table. And congratulations to them, and I wish them well, they're terrific. So we actually did speak to both of them, and they said, one of the next, is there any more, are there any more school committees? I said, yes, but you're not going to come the night after the graduation. But I think it would be nice, I don't think, I don't think we should ask them to appear on June 20th, but if I happen to reach out to them, which I might, and I'll ask them if they would like to come, and then we can thank them in person, I think that'd be nice. And we won't make them stay through the meeting, I don't think.
Well, they've been our representatives for two years, and they certainly both have had valuable contributions, I think.
Yes, they've had, they have great, they've had a lot of
Appreciate their efforts.
A great voice and a lot of things to say, and they're terrific.
Good insight, absolutely.
So I will, I will check with them, see if they want to come.
Does anybody else have any other matters?
I'll just make one, if I can, seeing as how I'm sitting here in my sports gear, having come off the field with a bunch of Foxborough High School freshmen. I think our season ended, I left a little early, but, but maybe just a chance to congratulate all of our spring sports teams for, for effort well done, and thank you to the reporter for really good coverage, I thought, all spring long, but there are so many athletes, student athletes that we have, busy and a lot of successes during the spring season, so congrats to all of them.
Good. Yeah, did you have a question?
That's really
Yeah, but I can just, it's for Debbie, I can just ask it before you go forward.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else on the committee have any, any other matters, anything?
There are world graduation times, so just congrats to everybody who puts all that together. Class night was terrific, scholarship night, equally, just a lot of work and a lot of recognition on a lot of students. The only thing I feel I've missed is all the spring sports, because every afternoon has been negotiations. It really, it really did hit me. I've been to so little when it comes to athletics or extracurriculars, so I look forward to next spring.
It has been a busy time, it has. All right, well, if we're done with other matters, if nobody has anything else, we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of negotiating strategies with union personnel, the Foxborough School Bus Drivers Association. We will be returning to open session, so we do not adjourn now.
Yes.
Take a roll call vote, or?
Well, I reckon, I, I move that we go into executive session.
You have a second, or?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Five ayes.
We'll be back. We will be back. Take my seat. If you're the only one taking notes, the rest of us just ran back.
All right, we've returned.
Yes, I motion that we open the, our, open session again.
I second, okay.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we're back, and we're going to vote on the proposed 2016-2019 Foxborough School Bus Drivers Association collective bargaining agreement. Would anyone like to make a motion?
To approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
To approve the
As, as written.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of approving the proposed 2016-2019 Foxborough School Bus Drivers Association collective bargaining agreement? Five in favor, none opposed, no extensions.
I motion that we adjourn our open session. I'll return to
All in favor of adjourned? Five, zero, zero. Thank you, everybody. Good night.